2023. We have several pieces of business to conduct in the work session tonight. And I'll ask Mr. Sanborn to introduce our first item on the agenda, item number two. Thank you.
All right. We've got Dave White and Megan McDonald here to give you an update on some changes to the way we would like to proceed with some of our key events that we do every year. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so as Jeff said, we would like to talk to you guys and get approval for an event change that we're looking at, and then also just kind of fill you in on a few changes that we've already approved and give you an update on our 2023 event list. So the big topic for tonight is the location of Live After Five. So we've really outgrown this space in Tufts Memorial Park. Our event attendance has skyrocketed. We have doubled the event since I've started working here, and we're looking for more space. So we know there's always pros and cons with that, and so that's what we're going to kind of chat with you about tonight. But as far as staff recommendation goes, we're recommending moving Live After Five from Tufts Memorial Park to the Village Arboretum. And so on the first page, this is the event list for if we are able to move Live After Five to Tufts, out of Tufts Memorial Park and into the Arboretum. It shows that we still have 65 events that will take place in Tufts Memorial Park. And just to kind of give you a full overview, we have two events that will happen in Cannon Park and one at the Harness Track. And with moving Live After Five to the Arboretum, we would have 11 events at the Arboretum. So looking at that Tufts Park list, we will go from 13 events with road closures downtown to eight. Some of those are village-run events, some of those are village-partnered events, but at the end of the day, the projection for 2023 would be eight events with road closures still downtown. So moving to the Arboretum, like I said, our pros and cons list for that, number one being it's just safer for attendees, which is really something that we have focused on this year and as well as last year, ever since COVID safety and of those attending have been our top priority. As I said, we've doubled our event size and have actually taken in road closures to try to appease downtown businesses. So in 2017, when I began, we closed most of Chincapin Road, and now we don't touch Chincapin. We just closed the side street right outside of the park. So we've decreased our event footprint, and now we have more people attending the event. So I'm just going to jump into a few key pros that we see best fit. Dave, feel free to jump in as needed. Number one being safer for event attendees. No vehicle traffic mixing with foot traffic. We completely take people at our event out of the roads. Joyce's Meadow in the Arboretum can hold all of our event participants, our food trucks, our vendors, band, and production. We won't have any road closures at that point, so that's always a nice perk. And then if you've ever been to one of our Live After Five events, we have golf cart parking in the Pine Straw next to the park, and that's also where we have our production that parks. So we have some vehicles. They don't enter the park. They don't cross the sidewalk, but we do have parking near the park. But right now, we have children who like to play back there, and we hope everybody is paying attention, and it gets dark out there. Kids are playing. We just don't want any accidents by mixing those golf carts production with children playing. By moving it to the Arboretum, they have the trails to play on, which never intersect with any traffic. So three key safety points right there. Like I said, the bigger event footprint, Dave, has the size of the parks and square footage, I think, for us.
Sure. So as we look at the square footage of our event space, Tufts is about 64,000 square feet, whereas Arboretum is close to 140,000 square feet. So obviously, you can accommodate more folks into the Arboretum for the event. And also, it deals with some safety concerns, too. As we reach our capacity limits in Tufts, there is a safety concern there with so many people in a confined spot. So we move out to the Arboretum. We have more space, like Megan mentioned, for more folks to come visit, as long, as well as some more vendors and sponsorships potentially.
So with that additional space, we want to grow activities that we're doing in the park. So right now, we are scaled back. We only have what is needed in the park in the park. We have our food trucks in the street. We have our beer and wine vendors in the street. We have a tent for Parks and Recreation, which we hold kids' crafts at. And then we have a tent in the park for production and a tent in the park for our sponsor. So those are the only three things that we are able, and of course, the stage. Those are the only things we're able to have in the park right now. If we had more space, we'd love to increase the activities that we're doing for kids. So they're not necessarily running to the trails to keep busy, but what can we do to keep them occupied in the park? We want to add more sponsors, add more space for businesses at our event. We want to add more food trucks. Our lines get really long. We'd love to add more beverage vendors and just add more variety to the event. And in Tufts Park, we cannot do any of that. We will have to move forward, as we have for the past couple of years, which is still a great event. It's just we know we can offer more during the event. So a larger footprint, grow the event, grow the activities that we're doing. Parking is always an issue at events. Being at the Arboretum, we hope we could utilize the Cannon Park Community Center parking. We'd love to run golf cart shuttles. It's something that we've done in the past for events at the Arboretum. For some reason, during Live After Five, they do not take it, the community doesn't take advantage of the shuttles that we've offered in the past. The most that we've ever had ride the shuttle to Live After Five was 16 people. So when we run golf cart shuttles, I don't know if it's just the equipment that everybody's bringing in. They're bringing in coolers and chairs and blankets, that it's just a hassle to get out of one car and into another. If we offer a golf cart shuttle, you know, there's not as much having to move around. And just as in walking distance, too. I know I would walk from the community center to the Arboretum if I was going to attend the event. I'm not necessarily going to take it all the way downtown. So we can utilize the community center a little bit more. As far as a production standpoint goes, in 2010 for the Vent Scale Concert, the Arboretum power source was updated to hold such a large concert. And right now, the power at Tufts Memorial Park is not adequate. We have an awesome production company that we work with, but they actually have to tap into the ground power to run our events downtown. Where at the Arboretum, they don't have to do that. We have an adequate power source already on site. Emily and I learned that they were tapping into the ground power after the tree lighting last year. We were staying, we were cleaning up, and the entire park went dark. And we were like, oh, that's never a good thing. Little did we know, our production company actually had to turn off the power source, cut all power to the park in order to safely unplug their equipment. So we're lucky that we work with such great professionals that know how to do that. But at the Arboretum, they don't have to, and I think it just provides a safer environment for our crew and our bands as well. Those are kind of my biggest key pros for moving the event, other than staff availability as well. When we're not closing roads, Emily and I can focus our attention on the things happening, the activities happening right now. A lot of our time and attention is going towards road closures. We bring in the entire buildings and ground staff to do our road closures, as well as the entire Parks and Recreation staff. So we actually have close to probably 10 to 15 of us that come in on Fridays just to strictly close roads. So if we don't have those road closures, either they can help us with something else we have going on, or they can be off doing the things that they normally do day to day. Any questions so far? You want me to keep going?
I have a couple of questions. I think, as I've experienced Live After Five for some years, as everybody in the council has to one degree or another, it's become a very successful event. I'm not surprised at the idea to move it. I think that time has arrived, and I support that idea. You mentioned, however, something I hadn't really thought too much about, and that is sponsors and other participants. Can you elaborate a little bit further on that, how that would change or what that does to help us if it does?
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, we have a really loyal stage sponsor. Martha Gentry has sponsored Live After Five for as long as I have been here. She's our stage sponsor. So we have had a couple kids' sponsors before. We've had some cup sponsors, but by providing a bigger space, we can, we can add multiple different levels of sponsorship. So like I said, we could have a kids' own sponsor. We could have a cup sponsor. We can have a food truck sponsor. We could, but right now, we don't have the space to offer those people opportunity in the park to mingle with the community. Right now, it's really hard just to get to any tent in the park. But like I said, with the added space, I feel like we just open a lot of doors for other opportunities. So.
Now, when you say a sponsor, what does that, what does that mean financially?
Yeah, so for example, our stage sponsorship level, last year, we are changing some of that pricing moving forward, but Martha Gentry, for example, paid $1,500 per event to have a booth space at the event and to have her logo on our banners. So that's just one example. And like I said, that's pricing from last concert season, so it is changing this year. For example, our kids' own sponsor level last year was $500. So they have their signage, their logo at our kids' zone, and a tent to mingle with the community.
And I don't know the financial dynamics of Live After Five just as an event itself, but does it pay for itself currently or not? The village is contributing some funds to that other than the sponsors?
Correct.
So potentially, the increase in sponsors by moving to the Arboretum would allow coverage of the cost to put on the event to be self-determined, self-generated?
And I don't know if we can necessarily cover the full cost of the event, just with how expensive it is to put on that type of production, but we definitely could get, get more revenue coming in for, for the production.
Other questions from Dave or Megan here?
I have one question. You mentioned parking at community center. Turkey Tribe, people parked at Rassie Wicker. Okay, so Rassie, and Rassie Wicker holds a lot of cars.
They do.
Okay, so they can, Rassie Wicker and Walke are community center and take a golf cart. Okay.
Yep. And we.
All right. So I was just going to kind of piggyback on the parking comment, that you're going to elaborate a little bit more, that Village Hall could be an opportunity to park. Some nice organized parking up this way with, like you mentioned, Rassie Wicker Park, along with the community center and Cannon Park as well, the new parking lot off of Rattlesnake. And then along the park itself would be good organized parking for participants to park. And the thought is, there's golf cart, golf cart shuttles, quick and easy, back and forth, back and forth, to a nice designated paved parking spots.
Pat, did you have a question?
Yeah, two questions. One, how will the downtown business community receive this? Have you talked to them? What would be the impact to them if we moved this?
Yeah, so I talked to the Pinehurst Business Partner President, Katrin. The Pinehurst Business Partners would like to see Live After Five remain in Tufts Park.
Ah, okay.
So they're in support of keeping it downtown. As far as my interaction with businesses go, they're not happy with what we're doing on site. They don't want us closing roads. They don't, they don't want us interrupting their business day to day. But they also then don't want the event to leave, but there's then no compromise as to what we're doing. If we're going to have this event downtown, we need more space, which means more road closures. So although the Pinehurst Business Partners are in favor of keeping it downtown, not all businesses are.
I seem to remember a lot of businesses don't stay open for Live After Five.
Correct. So I did, I put together, just on my personal notes, a list of businesses that are always open. No matter what type of event we have, they're always open. So we have Dugan's Pub, Drum and Quill, Lisi and Nico. So those are our four main restaurants downtown currently. I know there, there's more coming. The Corner Store is always open, and Bumpin' Baby is always open. So we have six that are open and loyal to all of our events. And there's a much larger list of those who are not open or willing even to stay open for our events.
My observation on that, on the couple of times in the last few years when the Live After Five has been in the Arboretum, is that from a restaurant point of view, and of course, this is a little bit seasonal, depends on the weather. At least some of the restaurants tend to do, I think, as well or better, because people can come and go to the restaurants when the event isn't in town, kind of blocking the streets and otherwise taking up, taking up space. Now, that may vary from one restaurant to another or one store to another, but there's some feeling, I think, that if, if people are dining, especially those that might dine outside, it's a little more comfortable when the decibel level is down the road a piece than in the village. That's just an observation.
Absolutely, and I don't have any information from the restaurants to speak on that. So I'm sure they, they stay open every Friday, so I'm sure there is some benefit to Live After Five in businesses downtown that are open.
Other questions? Pat?
Yeah, I just, I had, I guess I would like to know more from what the business, the downtown business community. I'm not, I don't have any recollection of how the partygoers will travel to the Arboretum. I hear what you're laying out, but I can see where the foot traffic that I think the downtown business community would enjoy is probably going to be diminished a bit.
Sure.
And so that's why I asked my original question, but I'm curious of any more comments you have on that.
You know, right now, we don't have any support from any downtown business during this event. So that's, that's tough, too. So I, when I first started here, I reached out to all the restaurants. I said, hey, I have to feed every single band member at our event. Can I, I have a budget. Can I purchase those meals for you? They're like, no, we're too busy. We can't, we can't do that. When it comes to road closures, you know, we are, the concerns and frustrations are brought up to us on site. That's something that we're dealing with constantly. The businesses within the footprint of our event layout, so we, we cut off at the flagpole to Tufts Park. I don't even think for, we have five concerts. I don't even think for two of them, all of those businesses were open. Sometimes Seacups is open, sometimes Cameron &amp; Company is open, the Deli is closed, the Gentleman's Corner is closed.
Does Market Square ever close?
It does not. It did for our tree lighting this year, and we partnered with the Pinehurst Business Partners on that event to encourage businesses to stay open, and we didn't have full participation then either. So as far as foot traffic and getting business on the evening of our event, as far as the businesses go, I don't, people aren't leaving the park to go shop at that point in time. I know when Cooper &amp; Bailey's was in our event footprint, she was like, I can't get people in our door. They're enjoying your event. She's now moved, so I won't continue to speak on that. But as far as restaurants go, I'm sure there are people that mingle between restaurants and the event.
Let me shift to the issue of public safety.
Yep.
I think there's a certain degree of safety people have in the downtown area.
Sure.
Whereas the Arboretum is a little more isolated, may not be as well-lit.
It's not.
It's not.
It's not.
Okay. And so have you talked to Chief Webb? Have you talked to our public safety folks? And what would be the impact on public safety?
So what we do, there is not a lighting plan out there. In my cons list, that's part of it. We rent three to four light towers every event that we have at the Arboretum. I agree with you, there is a sense of charm when we're downtown, but I think there's a bit of a false sense of security when we get downtown. People see those barricades up, and everything else goes out the window. We're in Pinehurst, and that's a huge concern of ours because we're responsible on site at the event. The amount of missing children that we have per event is, is more than you would think. So like I said, I think there is a false sense of security downtown. We're at the Arboretum. We're not putting anybody in the street, which I think is our biggest pro for moving it to the Arboretum. We're not mixing those vehicles in that traffic. We're not allowing golf carts to even get onto the, past the event footprint. They're all staying on the street and on the perimeter. As far as, we've worked a lot with Justin Guthrie over at the Police Department. He is helping us figure out just different ways we can continue to increase safety at events, but we have concerns of people not seeing our barricades or not caring that there's barricades. I mean, there's issues all around the world with, with things like that. So what we are doing downtown is using vehicles to help with our barricades. You know, we have officers on site, we have fire on site, and we all make sure that we're crowd manager trained. So as far as safety goes, I, I think the Arboretum is safer, but that's my personal opinion.
I want to jump on that just a little bit also. Lighting is a huge issue.
Yes.
For safety. And when we talk about light towers necessary for the Arboretum events, do we have light towers to make all this happen right now?
Right now, we rent at Richmond Reynolds. So we hold an event at the Arboretum called Eats, Beats, and Brews. It's one of our highest attending events. We typically average what we think is around 3,000 people at that event, and we've never had an issue. I typically rent my light towers at the beginning of the year for the full year, so I don't have an issue getting those on site.
Okay, because if we do this, we want to make sure we do have those light towers out there for the visibility on there.
Absolutely.
I think some of this, you're going to be changing problems.
Absolutely.
And so we might eliminate the problem of the kids playing in the street, but when you talk about running on the, on the trails, if you're a 12 and 13-year-old playing Capture the Flag, that's fine. A five or six-year-old, that concerns me.
Absolutely.
And, and so again, we'll, we'll change problems on there.
Sure.
So lighting, number one, on there, the safety issue. The other part of this is that I'm curious about demand, and you probably can't answer that. I don't think anybody can really answer it, but just a question that goes through my head right now. One of the big draws that we have in our community is just a really cool downtown.
Yeah.
And so people are going to there because of music, you got neat place, you got the square, you got that kind of stuff. And I'm not sure if that's going to change by necessarily going to the Arboretum.
Absolutely.
Because it is a while. So we may see a drop in attendance because of it. And I just throw that out there as a, as a thought.
Great point. And, you know, we would like to give this a try for one year. We want to give this a shot for the five concerts that we have scheduled this year because you're absolutely correct. There are other problems that come with moving to the Arboretum. It sounds like it's a lot easier on staff, but it's a much larger footprint. My steps double when we're out at the Arboretum. So it's not necessarily easier on staff, it's just harder in a different way. So as far as the kids and playing at an event, we want to add more kids' activities. Right now, we have one tent and two tables, and we have no room for anything else. We have the full Timmel Pavilion with lights, ceiling fans. Can we utilize that for our kids' area? Have more tables out, have more for them to do, rather than just right now our two tents, and it's kind of elbow to elbow to even get to us in the, in the park. So I absolutely agree with you, and some of those we will learn along the way and will continue to adjust, just like we're doing downtown now. So, so yeah, I think you're right. And like I said, we'd like to give it a try for one year. We have five concerts in 2023. Let's see how it goes. Address those concerns that come up from the community, from the public, and if we need to reevaluate, reevaluate in 2024. That's my suggestion.
We've had one Live After Five over here, correct?
We did, for COVID.
And how was the attendance at that?
It was fabulous.
It was great. Lot of, lot of great feedback, actually.
And did you learn from that?
One more time.
Did you learn from that?
Absolutely. That one was a tough one because we had set it up where everybody rented their little squares, and then the same day, the governor lifted all of those restrictions, and so that was out the window. But it was, it was extremely well-attended, well-received from the community at that time. Was that just because it was the first event back pre-COVID? Maybe, but the feedback that we had was, was good enough to bring this conversation to you.
And we learned a lot from that, too, you know? So we now know that what the proper layout might be, where we can stage the food vendors, where it's nice to have the kids' inflatables in the grassy areas, grassy area, where to set up the stage. And so we learned a lot from that, from that event there, and I think we're going to be just be able to make some improvements moving forward.
In fact, you guys want to try this for a year. You've had experience with one before, and if we do it for a year, you've got four events that you can tweak before you get to the fifth one, to see if the fifth one is perfect and worth continuing to do it here.
Absolutely.
Depending on the weather, too.
Always the weather.
It's a tough time on Fridays for you guys when the little, the weatherman is needing to be consulted quite a bit.
Absolutely.
One thing I would, I would suggest as we make this move, or if you make this move, is that we have the electrical service here in a spot, and it's quite, it's quite robust for terms, as you mentioned, be helpful. I'd like you to give some consideration to the way the stage is organized and the way the music is focused.
Yep.
And maybe we'll get in some point to the decibel levels for these, these sort of concerts as, as we develop this plan.
Yeah, long-term, I'd love to see a permanent stage. I'd love to see more power just spread out throughout the park. I'd love a permanent lighting plan rather than bringing in these light towers. So long-term, I have a lot of goals, but of course, yeah, I absolutely understand what you're saying, and we can absolutely tweak things as we go.
Now, Megan and Dave, would you like us to make further comments on this now, or do you want to go to another part of the, of your items? You have several items here you wanted to discuss, but am I seeing and hearing from council a general consensus to recommend to go?
I just had one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jane, I didn't, I didn't.
Okay. It sounds like you're making a good case for the benefit of the event.
Yes.
And staff.
Yes.
To move it out, especially to give it a whirl for a year. I am concerned hearing that the business community downtown doesn't want it, want it moved, and I, I agree with Pat, we should, we should be looking for more input from them on that. But would it be possible to have sort of a reverse shuttle for people who might want to go from the event downtown without going back to their car and be able to go to a restaurant or go to a store? I don't know if that is any kind of a good idea or not, but in other words, find some way to include the, the business, businesses in the village center in some way and, and continuing to participate in the event a little more closely.
Yeah, and absolutely.
They probably have much better ideas than I do about that, but that just sprang to mind.
Sure, and we're, we're definitely open to that, and I know, as you know, we've been to a couple business partner meetings together. I work really hard to have a good relationship with the Pinehurst Business Partners. When I reached out to Katrin, I said, hey, this is our idea. You know, her job is to be the betterment of the businesses. What can she do? But my job is to make sure that I'm presenting the best event possible. So I think it's important that I present this, but I understand the effect it could have on the businesses downtown. So my idea isn't, sorry, guys, we're pulling out these five concerts. It's, we need to move these concerts. We've outgrown the space. Now, what can we do to bring things back to downtown? So they do late till eight over the summer. Right now, we have no participation in that. What can we do to enhance what you're already doing? Can we bring music to market? Can we add a scavenger hunt for the kids? Can we add a kids' own tent to keep the kids occupied while the parents are shopping? So I'm, I understand what a big hit it is to take five large events out of downtown, but I'm not, I want, what can we do to continue to work with the Pinehurst Business Partners and add, add things back to the park without having to shut down roads?
I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't remember specifically the numbers, but in the business survey, there was a surprising number of businesses that said that Live After Five hurt their business.
It all depends. There, there are many who feel that way and others who don't, but yes.
Yeah, and it was, it just, it surprised me that the number was as large as it was specifically with respect to Live After Five.
Yep.
And I think, I think part of that over time has been the issue of closing the streets. We made some adjustments over the last year to how that works, but it's still, as you've pointed out several times tonight, closing of the streets early in the day does make it difficult for shoppers to get to the stores.
Right.
On a day when any of the large events are being held, Live At Five or otherwise.
And I think there's also been the concern that the food, the food trucks take away from the restaurants.
And I'm sure there has been that type of concern. We've also been told that they can't handle the amount of people already wanting food, that without food trucks, they can't handle it at all. So I think you're always going to have people on both sides, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Megan.
Yeah.
Any other comments from council on this particular item before we move on to the other items that they want to talk about? But am I hearing a consensus we should allow this to happen for a year, give this a try, and move on from there? Is that agreeable?
Yeah, but I would like them to take seriously Jane's suggestion, because I think that it'd be wise to have that shuttle stop off, it's only, can't be more than five minutes away from the Arboretum to Donald Ross's little statue, and then spin back around.
Sure.
I think at least that'll make an effort for those folks who want to visit the village and then go back.
Interesting point.
And I think over the course of the year, we can continue the conversation and see how we can optimize all angles.
Absolutely, and we're definitely open to everything. Yeah, we appreciate that.
I think the idea there is supporting our downtown businesses. How can we do that? And we don't really have any answers, we're talking right now.
Correct.
And so we need to delve into that more and come up with opportunities and come up with ways to do that. And I'm certainly open on doing that and giving them effectively more priorities than a food truck.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'd love to, you're going to have to give me the name, like where Pinehurst Pizza is, what is that area?
Oh, like Village Place area, kind of.
What can we do to incorporate them now that we're moving a little closer? So even just businesses as a whole, how can we work together to make this event happen?
Some of it might be, you know, the lighting, new lighting that we're going to, planning to put down Magnolia and so forth, that would light the way for walking back and forth.
Which is great.
Yeah, and there's the opportunity in the Arboretum itself to add some additional permanent lighting, too, that we can look at through the budget process currently, and maybe you'll see some additional lighting in your budget documents.
It's all being planned, Dave?
I'm making notes as we talk.
Okay, all right, good. The budget season will be beginning soon, you'll have to get Mr. Sanborn's approval on that.
That's right.
With the other senior staff. As we move through the agenda in the work session, we're going to come to a time a little bit later tonight and talking about the downtown business activity. So part of what we're talking about right now, we'll, in a sense, tie into that or at least put some other thoughts on that table of ways we want to organize the business community and try to work with them.
Yeah.
So they can see that the village is being supportive of their efforts.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So on this particular point, though, we're in agreement that they should move forward, and we'll expect these two events to be in the Arboretum next, for this year.
And a reevaluation.
Great.
Before we go beyond that.
I'm sorry.
And one year?
Yeah.
And then we reevaluate it and see how it goes.
Sure.
October.
For the next 10 years.
Absolutely, and we appreciate the consideration, and we'll continue to make improvements as we go, absolutely.
Great.
We really appreciate it.
Want to move on to parade safety, then?
Yeah, so this is just to kind of inform you guys of what's going on in Raleigh this past year. There was an accident at the Raleigh Christmas Parade with a float and a child participating in the parade. There's just been a few things brought in the media attention lately that we're saying, okay, we need to take a step back, what can we do to make our parades and our events safer? So we met with the managers, and we came to the conclusion that we're going to move all of the vehicles in the parade to the back of the parade lineup. Instead of mixing the entries, so right now, you can participate in our parade and walk next to your truck or walk next to your golf cart, we're going to eliminate groups mixing. So we're going to have our walkers leading the parade, all walkers, followed by golf carts, then followed by vehicles. So we're going to separate the groups this year, and then we're also going to assign village staff, either Parks and Recreation, our Police Department, or Fire Department to lead each group. So there'll be village staff in between, just being one more barrier between groups during our parade. So we already don't allow people to throw candy, so the only people going to be allowed to pass out during the events are the walkers. So if you're on a golf cart or you're in a vehicle, there's no passing anything out. If you'd like to pass out, we'd love for you to, you just have to enter as a walker. So no major changes to any of the entries other than they're going to be separated. So if somebody wants to have walkers and a truck, they just have to submit two applications, they can have two separate entries in the parade, just one way to eliminate people on foot mixing with vehicles. So just to enlighten you guys, and that's how we're changing with our St. Patrick's Day Parade. And then moving on, our fireworks celebration is still going to be the same fireworks at the Harness Track. We have the band, the Parks Brothers, who we've worked with last year, and they put on a great show. Food trucks and kids' activities, that's going to be on Monday, July 3. And then on Tuesday, July 4, we're going to have our pet parade. So we're going to close fewer streets downtown, we're just going to have our pet parade, we're really going to enhance that, and that's going to lead into the farmer's market downtown. So that's the parade we're going to focus on for July 4, and it also then ties into the Sandhills Dog Fair.
Can I stop one minute there?
Yeah.
So the July, traditional July 4 parade.
Yes.
Will just be the pet parade?
Pet parade.
And will the other part of that parade now be at the fireworks celebration at the Harness Track? It won't exist.
It will not. Nope, we're just going to try out our pet parade only this year. So to tie that in, the Sandhills Dog Fair, so it used to be the Aberdeen Dog Fair, approached the Pinehurst Business Partners, and so the Pinehurst Business Partners adopted the Dog Fair, and it's now the Sandhills Dog Fair. So we are going to support that event this year. It's happening on Saturday, April 15. They're going to have their event at the Village Arboretum. So they are going to have the Dog Jog that's going to start in Huff's Park, but the Dog Jog is going to make its way to the Arboretum, where they're going to have their annual activities that they've done the past few years in Aberdeen, and like I said, supported by the Pinehurst Business Partners with support from us. A new event, a dog event. We're hopefully going to continue to build that relationship with the Pinehurst Business Partners, but also then enhance our pet parade and the activities in the park following based off those relationships, vendors, connections that we're going to have through the Sandhills Dog Fair.
Are horses considered a pet for the pet parade?
We would absolutely entertain the entry if they could be leashed and controlled.
I don't have a horse.
If you have a horse.
I just was trying to.
I mean, if you can, if you can have your, we do require pets to be in carriers on a leash throughout the entire event. So, excuse me, if you can make that happen, I'd be super impressed to see it.
Yes.
So those are just a few updates that we have as far as those events go. Those are the only changes that we have made thus far. And then at the very last page, you will see all of our event dates for 2023. The only event not on here is Fall Festival, which is put on by the elementary school because they haven't given me that date just yet. So typically around Halloween. So just to kind of give you an update of everything that we have going on and what to expect for this year. So we do send this out, once we have the updated information, we're going to reorganize everything, get it online. But I do email all of the businesses our schedule for the year. I communicate any road closures that we have, what they can expect to see downtown, and so that email will go out in the next few weeks.
Don't send that to council members also?
Yeah, we absolutely can, you got it.
Megan, on the Dog Fair, how did all that develop from Aberdeen to here? And I think you were discussing with business partners on that. Could you just add a little bit to that?
Yeah, so they had outgrown the space in Aberdeen, and they, I guess they have a harder time getting closures approved because of the railroad tracks. So they weren't able to grow their event space anymore. They were trying to come up with ideas, what can they do, because their event is huge and continues to grow. They had a relationship with people already in the business partners, they wanted to be under a nonprofit, just to continue to, they can donate money easier under a nonprofit, where right now, they don't have as much capability to do so. So that's, they approached the Pinehurst Business Partners and said, hey, we'd love to bring the event to Pinehurst. They said, we love that idea, but you also then need to be on board with the village. And so they got together, met with us, I presented that to Dave and Mark, who thought the event was a great idea. They have more space in the Arboretum, they love that they don't have to be in the streets either, and everybody was on board with keeping that event in the Arboretum, and they loved the idea of this Dog Jog starting downtown, so people will be out. It's also the first day of the farmer's market. So I've already talked to Tim and Carla St. Germain about that, just saying, hey, this event wants to happen at the same time, can we coexist? They're on board to make it a huge day, so there'll be an event downtown, but the main event will be happening at the Arboretum. Did that answer your question? Okay.
That concludes your report, then.
That's everything I have, unless you have any other questions.
Are there other questions from the council for Dave or Megan? All right, thank you very much, well done.
Really appreciate it.
Appreciate your time and effort, and it's quite a list.
Very thoughtful presentation.
Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate the support with Live After Five this year, too, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on into the next item on the agenda for the work session, which is a report on meetings with Pinehurst Business Partners, and I think Jeff Batten is going to help lead that.
Good evening. You want to go ahead and lead into, or I know the three of us were at that meeting, however you want to.
Absolutely. I think it was January 9.
January 12, I think.
January 12. Jeff Batten and Jane and I, in following up to other discussions at the council in December, wanted to have a meeting with the leadership of Pinehurst Business Partners to do a couple of things. One was to review the amenity plan and the positive effects that we think that'll have on the total core village, but all the streets involved. And to clarify some of the issues regarding Market Square as a place, were also discussed at that meeting. So in fact, I think what I would do, I think Jane, you have kind of a summary of the key parts of that.
I do.
Particular discussion, which then leads into the rest of the discussion about the amenity plan itself for the core village and how we're proceeding with that under Jeff's leadership. Jane?
Right, thank you. We did have a good meeting with two members of Pinehurst Business Partners, Katrin Franklin, who's the president, and Jim Nash, and we talked through, first of all, we talked about parking, again, in the Village Center, and their concern about ways that we can do a better job at keeping customer parking spaces in front of the shops free for customers. And they favor having timed parking with fines, that would encourage long-term parking in the sandlot. But we moved on to the amenities plan that McAdams had put together for us, and talked about Market Square. And we started, we talked about the length of Market Square from Dugan's Pub down to Magnolia. And the portion of Market Square that's closest to Dugan's Pub is narrow, the road is narrow there. And there's some parallel parking on the north side, but there's no sidewalk on the south, and a sidewalk on the north side, but there's no sidewalk on the south side. And at council meeting, we had said, well, gee, if we tried to widen that sidewalk on the south, or put a sidewalk on the south side, we would end up losing the parallel parking spaces. And we know that there's a concern with the business people that they don't want to lose parking spaces. But it was pointed out that having a sidewalk on the south side sort of made Market Square more accessible to pedestrians and that it was worth it to consider exchanging at Southside sidewalk along that strip and losing the two or three parallel parking spaces that are there now. Because as you move farther along toward Magnolia, the center portion of Market Square widens out, and there's angled parking on both sides. And there, in the mid-block, what you have on the south side are backs of buildings which front on Chingapin, but they go all the way through, and so their backs come out on Market Square, and there are HVAC units and these kinds of things which are kind of unsightly. And so there was a question of whether it would be possible to screen those HVAC units in order to improve the appearance in the mid-block. There is adequate parking there, there is sidewalk on both sides of the street, but if we could screen the HVAC units, that would be a big help. And on the north side of the street there, the mid-block, there is an alley that emerges onto Market Square that runs back behind some of the mid-block buildings, and it's, I guess it's a private property, and its use is shared by a number of different lots behind there, and it's used for, you know, trash and those kinds of things. But it is unsightly as it emerges onto Market Square. And so the question is, what can be done to improve the looks of that and improve the way that that alley is managed so that for shoppers who are walking up and down Market Square, it's a more pleasant experience there? And then moving on to the third portion of Market Square, as it approaches Magnolia, there are sidewalks on both sides, there's parking on both sides, the street is wider. But that's where there needs to be, well, and all along, but more landscaping and cleaning up the landscaping that's already there, and this is something that we had already talked about doing at council level, is improving the landscaping that goes along that portion of Market Square. We discussed, and, oh, and then also lighting along Magnolia and on the western portion of Chingapin, so that folks who are shopping know that, you know, as it gets darker in the winter months and so forth, toward the end of the afternoon, that they'll be able to get safely back to their cars or back to the resort where they're staying, because we've got better lighting throughout the village, and that's also something that we were already planning to do. We did talk about whether it would be better to change the directional flow, traffic flow on Market Square. And after going through the discussion and ways that you could, you could change it with the least amount of impact on the dogwood end of Market Square, if you were going to change the directional flow, I think at the end of the conversation, it was left that it really wasn't so much about which direction of traffic flow was better or not for the businesses there, it was to improve that one stretch of sidewalk, to add that one stretch of sidewalk, and then to improve the look in the different other parts of the street. And also, there was, again, support for the Arbor Arch idea, still, regardless of which direction the traffic flow went. So that's the overview of that part of the discussion. And then we also did talk quite a bit about the idea of having a continuing quarterly meetings between members of the business community, council members and staff. And we've got, from now coming up to the U.S. Open, there's definitely going to be certain topics that have to do with how the Open is managed, and street closures and parking and all that different kinds of things that are going to have to do with that, and we certainly want to keep in communication on that point. But I think that there's always going to be topics of conversation that we want to keep in communication with the business community, and so we'd like to propose having, on an informal basis, not to set up a formal committee, but to have regular meetings on a quarterly basis, not unlike perhaps the earlier Village Enhancement Committee, possibly, but to have a couple of representatives from Pinehurst Business Partners, to have maybe another two representatives from the Village Center who are not necessarily members of Pinehurst Business Partners, because Pinehurst Business Partners doesn't represent all the businesses in the Village Center. And we'd like to make sure that a restaurant gets on the, in the group. And then to have another two representatives who are not from the Village Center, but from other business areas within the village itself, such as the area where, on Linden Road, where Elliot's Restaurant and some other businesses are, or Trotter Hills, just as examples. And then we think it's important to have some landlords as well, if we can encourage them to participate. So that was the thought. Two council members, props the mayor, and I would be very honored to participate, and to have Jeff Batten, he's able to do that, so that was the thought.
So there's a lot of thoughts wrapped up in that in this report, but to tie it back pretty quickly to the conversation we just had about downtown businesses and trying to show support for them, this committee idea, which would involve non-core village businesses as well as core village businesses, I think is a way to have that dialogue occur with the diversity, as Jane was explaining, of the types of members that it would be. So it's just a, I think that part of it is for a little bit further discussion by the council, but that's the idea, to begin to have a regular way to communicate with the business community and to make sure we're reaching out to those members of the community that aren't necessarily members of Pinehurst Business Partners, but do play a key role in businesses, whether it's in the village or in our. in businesses, whether it's in the village or in our exterior commercial, commercial areas. So that's one thing, you know, for your discussion here tonight. Although I think we want to mainly be focusing on the amenity plan to make sure we're keeping up with Jeff Batten's need to move forward. Which really gets then to the other point of Jane's discussion, and that is that there were some ideas in the meeting we had with, with respect to Market Square specifically, that we may want to re-discuss in some length tonight with respect to Market Square itself and the changing of the street, which we didn't focus on or decided not to pursue in the earlier meetings we had in, in December. So kind of three things happening there. But Jeff, I, I do think the most important aspects of this tonight are make sure we're keeping you on, on point. And maybe we should go into that now. And the issues of Market Square specifically could come into that, to that discussion then.
Sure, we can do that. If, Kelly, you don't mind pulling up the list?
John, this is great, this is great timing. You know, ever since the retreat, I've been talking, asking, what does it mean to support the business community?
Yep.
And we've discussed it in various ways tonight. So I happened to make a list over the past few days. Patrick, feel take this.
Patrick, I think you've been asked to be the clerk here.
I've, I've identified, I think, and it might not be complete, and I'll give Jeff Batten a copy too. And Kat, I'll give you one. Businesses that are not, I don't believe they're part of Pinehurst Business Partners. And this is, so just, it just, I've compiled this because I've been trying to identify since December who our business community is.
When you say other businesses, you mean, as far as you know, businesses that are not members of Pinehurst Business Partners?
Correct.
Okay. Helpful list, about 20 names. So moving forward, these would be among the businesses we would want to try to include in one way or another, at least by industry, if not in terms of, you know, every individual business. Jeff?
Right. Jane, thanks for the, for the highlights of, of our conversation with the two representatives of Pinehurst Business Partners and as merchants of Market Square. I think we were speaking to them about the amenity plan in general as Pinehurst Business Partner representatives. And then I think a lot of the ideas that they talked about on Market Square were as merchants of Market Square. And I think they made it, they, they tried to make sure that we understood that that was the differentiation of our conversations between those two things.
Right, thank you.
So I do want to acknowledge that, you know, we were having, we had two conversations, we had one conversation, but it was with them in, as representatives of two different sort of entities, if you will, one as merchants and the other as, as the business partners. So relative to business partners, they did support the, the list of items that council had indicated that you wanted to pursue back in December. And I wanted to take a little bit of time this evening just to run down and make sure that I have the list correct based on what we discussed in December. I think I've captured everything, but as John mentioned, there may be some additional information now that has emerged that may, we want to add something to this list or take something off. But essentially, we know we want to address stormwater and we're working towards that with some, already, we're underway with some review there. Evaluating this sidewalk expansion along the west side of Chinkapin, that would be basically from the Drum and Quill back to like the, to Eclectic or the Wine Shop is kind of in that vicinity is where we were talking. I have begun doing a little bit of evaluation of that potential and have a meeting with the property owner, the, the primary property owner there tomorrow to look at that. Looking at possibly converting some of the parallel parking spaces to cart parking in order to add quantity of parking downtown. I still have to begin, I haven't started that yet. Always stop at Magnolia and Chinkapin. We talked about in that, that evaluation, or let me rephrase it, not the evaluation, but the actual design is, is being, getting started now as, as we speak. Add some directional signage downtown to direct people to the public parking facilities that we have was on our list. We have, of course, already done this to paint the lamp posts, those are done, but then add the night sky deflectors. We wanted to do that, and that is in process now. We were, we were, we were adding them as we, as we have time and capacity availability. And I think there may be a third to a half done with those right now. Additional lighting needs downtown was on an amenity plan, and you guys wanted us to pursue that. And so we'll be developing some type of phased approach in all likelihood to figure out how to logically add those lights in a systematic, in a, in an appropriate manner.
Jeff, was that the bollards?
It was. It includes the bollards. It also includes additional street lamps in, in certain locations in the downtown. And, you know, that includes the Market Square as well as Chinkapin and, and the surrounding, immediate surrounding downtown. But also those bollards that lead to some of the, the key hospitality venues up by the Carolina, coming down from the Carolina into town, having, using bollard lighting to help lead that, going down Dogwood and going down Magnolia Road also. So leading you to the Pine Crest and then ultimately to the Manor as well. Some parking addition to the west side of Theater Building, we, we want to, you know, take a look at that. We have not started, you know, looking at that yet, but that was an item that y'all wished for us to at least to consider and look at. Road resurfacing, restriping, we need to do that downtown. We'd like to have that completed before the U.S. Open in 2024. There needs to be some things that occur ahead of that. So that timing is kind of up in the air based on some of these other things that we need to do before we resurface that, that, that whole territoria downtown. Existing benches and ordering new benches, we'll pursue that. Ordering trash receptacles and bike racks, we'll pursue that. And then the big thing right now that we have just wrapped up is a complete landscaping renovation plan for downtown. So all of the plant beds downtown, we now have a, a new landscape construction plan. And we worked with our beautification committee on the development of that. And the McAdams Group did that as well. I just got back yesterday, the final plan after two of our draft revisions that we did internally. So we'll be moving quickly on that. I'd like to see that get started sooner rather than later. So we'll probably, probably, we're putting that out to bed here in the, probably in the next 60 days. And then we'll see how that progresses from there.
I'm guessing your time is of the essence on this because of the U.S. Open?
Yeah, we'd like to get the landscaping in and at least let it have one growing season to, to, you know, it won't be huge material, plant material wise, but at least it will be settled and not appear that we just put it in right before the U.S. Open, although that is kind of the case. But we would like to at least get one growing season under our belt with, with a lot of that material. And then there's the residential 100 block of Magnolia Road where we have our designated San Clay Path historical monument. And that, that's a demonstration path that is through there. It also has a lot of on-street parking, parallel parking. And over the years, we've lost some landscape there. That, that, that just has a whole revamping of that, of that important block there that we want to, want to tackle. So these were the items that we originally had on our list. A couple of things that came up, as Jane mentioned, that are not in the amenity plan specifically, but I think are some, some things that we ought to really try to see if we can figure out how to address. One is that alley on Market Square. We've looked at this thing several times in years past. And there's some challenges there due to the access easement that is existing in that alley and that it is private property. But there may still be a way to screen some of that portion of the, of that alley. Then the, as you mentioned, there's a segment, I never really had thought about this until we had that meeting earlier this month, but on Market Square, on one side of the road, you have the front of all the buildings. And on the opposite side of the road, you have the back of some buildings that are fronting Chinkapin. And how do we make the, those, those that are facing Magnolia or, or, excuse me, Market Square, look more like the fronts of those buildings? And so I, I think those are things that we need to add to our list that weren't in the amenity plan, but I do think we need to, we need to look at those. I think there's, those were good ideas that were brought forth and, and those should be, they should be, I think, addressed.
How, how would you make them look that way?
Well, it would, you can't really, I don't think, make it have two fronts unless the owner is willing to do that, obviously. But I think that's a conversation that you would start with, with the owners of the property and, and, and say, look, what, what are your thoughts on how do we, how do we make the back of your house more like the front of your house? It may not be structurally possible, but then the next step thereafter would be, okay, what can we do in terms of screening and landscaping and those kinds of things to, you know, to hide some of the back of the house things, if you will? I think that's how I would initially proceed. But I do think that needs to be added to our list of things that we should, we should address because it, it does have a, a visual and aesthetic impact on, on Market Square. And I think there's, there's opportunity there.
Is a beautification grant appropriate, appropriate for that?
It would be.
Okay.
Absolutely. And that would be a source of, or dangling carrot potentially, if we're getting into a, a screening and landscaping kind of situation. The other thing that, you know, we did talk about with, in the meeting that we were, Jane kind of highlighted for us, in terms of the merchants on Market Square, as two merchants that we were meeting with in that, I think in that discussion, the interest in the expansion of the sidewalks. When McAdams was originally laying out that as a concept, they had it married with a timing to be coinciding with the potential construction of the carriage house. Now, I don't know if that's ever going to, you know, move forward or not. But it was, if we're going to reduce parking on Market Square, we would be making it up, which would help that parking situation. Whether we wish to, you know, at some point revisit the widening of the sidewalks, which would entail making some of the parking, parallel parking versus angled parking, that may or may not be something we will want to revisit at a, at a, at some point in time. Maybe not tonight, but it may be something that we want to keep on our list. I think all the items that, on the McAdams list, that we elected not to pursue at this point in time shouldn't be lost. I think we should maintain them because there may come an opportunity down the road where it makes sense to pursue some of those, so.
Would it be wise to say that if we were going to look at them and pursue them again, we should do them post U.S. Open?
I think at this juncture.
Rather than shoehorning them in with all these?
I would say at this juncture, it would be, it would be a challenge to try to even have that in, designed and in place. I think it would be very wise to not try to rush that.
Thank you.
We have a gracious plenty on our plate here to try to get done as it is ahead of the 24 Opens, so. So anyway, that, I just wanted to, again, make sure that I capture everything that we had talked about. Does this list look complete? And if so, just to let you know that we are developing timelines on each of these items so that we can keep track of where we are on all of them. And as I say, I think we should add a couple of things to our list related specifically to Market Square that I don't think are terribly difficult to do, but I think there are things that could certainly help.
Is there a ordering of this list, this one through 13 now, or is?
There, there is some sequence, this list, as you see it here, is not in a specific order. There is, however, on my timelines that I'm working on, there is some sequencing. There are some things that need to occur before other things occur.
Right.
And so I'm still trying to work through a little bit of that in my head to make sure that, I don't want to get something obviously built and then realize, oh, shoot, I shouldn't have done that now because I got, we're coming back through and tearing that out to do something else. So we, there is definitely a sequencing that is occurring. The draft timeline that I have, I've, I've, I've got that built in, but it's a draft timeline and I still want to.
Okay, I'd be interested.
But as we're, but as we're, yeah, and I'm, I have, I am pursuing a number of these right now. They're just in, all of them are in the beginning stages, if you will. But we are working a little bit on all of these at this point in time.
Jeff, Pat, were you done? I was just going to add one comment that I think if, all these things here, the one through 13, if they were to be completed prior to the U.S. Open, it would be a incredible visual change to our, our downtown. And so I don't have anything to add to it. I just, I, I am curious once you sort of sequence them. I know it takes a little time, but I think every, I, I can't see why anyone would object to any of these. But anyway, thank you.
I think some of the bigger, the bigger challenges, timing wise, might be the lighting, honestly. One thing is the lights downtown, we own, the village owns those individual poles. And the company that we have been buying them from for all these years is out of business. So now we've got a, a, a challenge to match those lamp posts. And they are, they're pieces. So it's, you know, there's a base and then there's the pole and then there's the, the top.
Have you checked eBay?
Uh, no, but I am working through other means to try to match those particular pieces that have to come together to make the, those lamp posts. So we will find them. It's just a, just going to take a little time to research that. So that concerns me. The second part of that particular project is the amount of brickwork that would have to be disturbed, sidewalks that are going to have to be taken up in order to lay power to these poles. The bollards don't disturb me that much because I think mostly they're going to be along the edge of the sidewalks in the locations we're looking so we're able probably to trench most of that safely and relatively easily. But these lamp posts potentially, I mean, we're going to have to pull up brick to get the power line, you know, to the, to the new sites. And, and that's going to take some additional effort and time to do. And we're going to have to do some evaluation of whether, because these are all also wired back to a couple of different central points that are metered. So do we have sufficient voltage to add additional lamps on that particular leg? That's another bit of a concern. It's been lessened of a concern to me in that we have gone to LED lights which are pulling less voltage. So it may not be a problem, but that is something we need to flesh out before we start slapping a bunch of street lamps in, in along the road. And then all of a sudden, we can't, all of them go dim when we, when we flip them on. So, so there's just some, there's just some, there's more moving parts to that particular one that are, maybe make it a tad bit more challenging.
Jeff, in looking at this list and specifically item 13, I was reminded of something which I thought was on this list, although it may already be planned under other projects. That is the, the Dogwood Road sidewalk from Market Square down through the Pine Crest. We have a variety of surfaces there from sand to gravel to other kinds of screenings and all. I, I thought that was there to be done in a, in a single rework, but is that another project?
That particular side of the sidewalk is not on this list, obviously. And my hesitation only with that right now is waiting for, I think, our National Park Service visit in February to determine if we can make some surface changes without affecting the national historic landmark status.
That's right. I, I remember that now. All right, well, they're here in a couple.
And that actually will play into this number 13 as well. There's, you know, it's going to be some question there as well.
Right.
And, and the potential expansion of different surfacing materials that may be a little more robust for us.
Okay.
In the San Clay pathway network.
Can you keep the microphone close as we go forward here? All right, so there's at least one, I would call it major item that we may wish or not to add to this list after discussion. And it has to do with the expansion of the sidewalk on the south side of Market Square. I think that's one of the key, key items that came out from this other meeting that we've talked, we've identified a bit tonight. So I had the benefit of going through the discussion with members of Business Partners, so did Jane and Jeff. But what other, what questions would council members have about that concept? Are you familiar with what we're talking about there? Which is the part of Market Square from Dogwood Road going right behind the RE/MAX building and making the sidewalk wider there, there isn't really one there, and carrying it down to connect with the sidewalk at the bottom third, as Jane explained a little earlier, of the sidewalk in front of the Old Sport Gallery. Now, we would lose potentially some parallel parking. And the idea came up at our last meeting about perhaps using some of that for golf cart parking, if that would work out. But that's, that's one of the critical points I think we need to deal with tonight.
Yeah, and, and I will add to that, it is the, behind First Bank, the sidewalk dead ends. It stops behind First Bank as it kind of runs into the casino building, no, the RE/MAX building. And then there is no. And then there is nothing from that point around until you get to the corner of Market Square and Dogwood. So if you're walking along that section, you hit a dead end. The other thing I would mention, and this may give us a little more flexibility regarding to possibly regarding the parallel parking spaces, is I think the sidewalk on the south side that was proposed in the amenity plan is a 10-foot wide sidewalk, which is probably not necessary to be that wide. So I think if we narrowed it maybe to six foot, it may be that we could still maintain at least golf cart, parallel parking along in front of the Dugans, maybe those locations, at least for the time being, until something else is decided relative to widening sidewalks on Market Square. That is small section we probably could get accomplished prior to 2024, if that ultimately is something you want to pursue. One of the things that happened at that particular location is a box truck or transfer truck caught the corner of the casino building, right at the point of the building at the corner, where the overhangs of the roof actually hang like out over the road. And this would kind of eliminate that situation. The sidewalk would force the vehicles a little further away from that building. But I don't know that that's necessarily the reason to do it because that's the first time I know that's ever happened. And obviously, that building's been there a long time, so.
Does everybody know what part of the sidewalk we're talking about here now?
Worth pursuing.
Okay, good.
...that we're talking about the south side of Market Square from Dogwood down to where the road opens up and widens at, I guess, about First Bank. Because from First Bank farther, all the way down to Magnolia, there is already a sidewalk there.
That's correct.
So we're, I think we're really just talking about one, that one little strip that doesn't have any sidewalk now.
That's right. It would be bridging those, the two sidewalks on either end of that small section.
And adding that would, I think visually, be a very interesting and helpful look to the street because it'd be a continuous flow of sidewalks on both sides connecting to, on the south side, as Jane said, in front of Old Sport Gallery there. And I think that that's visually something that would be very attractive, and I think it would, I think it would help to deal with the issue of how do we beautify the backs of the buildings that are on Chincapin that back up to Market Square? And it would offer an opportunity to landscape that, which we might not have otherwise. Jeff, of course, now, a couple of those diagonal parking spaces are on private property, so we would have to work with two or three different property owners on those. I think maybe four or five spaces are in that, or?
Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but there are some that are, that back up to the old BB&amp;T building that are on that parcel of land. And I'm not sure about the First Bank's property line. It may also be impacted by what we're discussing there.
Okay. So is this an idea that we want to add to Jeff's list here, priorities for evaluation and costing and all those, and timeframe?
The sidewalk? Yes.
I support this.
You do? All right, okay. Is there any, let's see?
The only other thing I think we needed to get, and I think y'all did, you would be okay with having this informal designated business representation. I think we envision that as being invited people that would kind of serve in that role for some period of time and maybe eventually, depending on how it formalizes over time or doesn't, you know, there may be a person that drops off and somebody else is added on along the way, those kinds of things. But I think that's at least, I think that's what we're envisioning. I just want to make sure I understand that.
Right, and in general, as we evolve this, the idea conceptually right now is there be two from, two members of this committee from Piner's Business Partners, two from core village businesses who are not members of village, of business partners, including at least one restaurant, two from the non-core village businesses, Jane gave the idea of Trotter Hills or Outland Road, and two landlords, because I think the landlords are critical to this. And then Jeff Batten and, at least initially, Jane and myself. So it works out to about 10, 11 people altogether. I think that's a manageable number. It's not too small, not too big, to be able to make decisions and hear information and move forward with how we can thwart our businesses physically and otherwise. Is that a general concept, okay, to move forward in that? Okay, all right. Jeff, I think we've done our work then on that.
Thank you, guys.
Did Jeff Sanborn have any thoughts on that? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Batten. Let's move on then to item number four, and then we'll get back with Darren here on Village Place Form-Based Code drafts. Alex, you're going to work with us here? I would suggest that, I think, at the end of this discussion, we'll take a short break before moving into the rest of the work session agenda, if that's all right. Well, would councilors to take?
I'd recommend doing now.
Do it now. All right, it is 6:30. Let's revisit this at 6:37. Just take a few-minute break and keep us moving. Would that be all right? So we'll in brief recess for about six, eight, 10 minutes. Session, and we'll be dealing with item number four on the work session agenda, the form-based codes. Darren and Alex, I want to thank you already for the work that you've done in getting us this far and with the whole small area plan and form-based code effort. And now we are moving right along with Village Place. I know you have some remarks you were going to share with us tonight, but let's make it clear, too, what is the objective you'd like us to get to tonight as we move through this very nice but hefty document? Thank you.
Well, thank you, and, you know, I give a lot of credit. We've spent a lot of time working with the Planning and Zoning Board on this, so, you know, they're a good part of this process, so we're very, very happy with the input that we've gotten over the last several months, and we'll continue to get input from them moving forward. Tonight, really, you know, we wanted to get in, we wanted to kind of present the document to you. You've never had us, you know, we haven't had the same sessions that we've had with you, that we've had with the Planning and Zoning Board to get here. So what we want to do is kind of introduce you to the document, tell you what's in the document, and just kind of go, just get you, get yourself to be familiar with what's in that document and how we intend to use it. Really, how we intend to use this document is this document, Alex, I have talked a little bit about it. Have we, we've talked about, should we adopt it as a set of guidelines, a separate document, or should we adopt most of it as part of a code, overlay code that gets added into, that gets added into the PDO? And I think what we're working on right now is creating a special district for Piner South and for Village Place. So there're going to be, there'll be a special district created that we're going to adopt as part of the code that's going to take the vast majority, a lot of the recommendations that are in this plan, and we put that into that, into the actual text, text of the ordinance. Alex, you got anything to add on that?
Not a whole lot, but just looking at this document and try to make sure it has that vision of what the regulatory framework will look like in order to implement the plans.
And that's really what it is, and we're going to get into, we'll show you some of the documents that really, you know, there's parts of the form-based code that are more, they are more like guidelines, and a lot of it, there's some codes like the signage code where it really, it really doesn't get it deep into the sign provisions. It's really more about public wayfinding signs and things like that, so they become more recommendations for what we can work on as a community. But things like the regulating plan, the building types, the lot standards, those are things that are really regulatory in nature because there's the setbacks, there where you build, those are the things that we're going to have to spend some time on that actually go in a portion of the code. We'll show you that in a little bit. So I'm going to, I'm going to start going over this, and I'm not going over every single page in the document.
As we go through, I'd be very interested to know how the new standards that are set forth here differ from what we already have in the PDO. And, you know, are they largely the same? Are they extremely different? And if they're different, why we would be changing from what's in our PDO as we go through?
And just to start that out, the reason why we would, and there are some differences, the reasons why we would be changing is because of the, kind of the development goals and guidelines that were laid out as part of this process. So when we look at trying to create the form-based area to create a more compact environment, we have to look at changing some of the, some of the lot standards, setbacks, and things like that. We'll get to that when we get to the dimensional requirement tables, and then I, we've created a pretty good table that shows you what our comparable zoning districts are and what we're proposing as part of this. So I'm going to.
I have a question. John, it asks, what's our objective here tonight? And I think you sort of answered it, but question I've had is, does something like this in final form get adopted, and then something like this then becomes a document that develop, you and the developers, will you, I'm not sure where we're going.
This is an ordinance.
Yes, this is, this is not an ordinance. If we adopt it, we can adopt it as guidelines, but what we're doing is we're taking the provisions that are spelled out and recommended in here, and we're adding those by creating that special district called Village Place, by creating that special district called Pine Her South, we're going to take these regulations and put it into, and that is what they'll be looking at. It's going to be a little bit different from the way the HPC handles it, is they have a set of standards that are a separate book that we refer to when we're, when we're dealing with people within, within the, within the historic district. With this, we want to, we want to try and throw as much into the actual PDO as possible because when somebody's coming in to do a development, you know, the first thing, a lot of the things they'll do is, what zoning district is that in? And we'll go to the Village Place, we'll go to the Village Place District, and then we'll start to look at all the rules and regulations pertaining to the Village Place District. It's just more efficient for, for everybody if it's, if it's in one place as much as possible, but things like, we have to talk about it, there is a very robust data, robust set of architectural guidelines within here, or standards. So we have to decide whether we want to put those as a separate document in this and we govern off of that, or we actually put that into the code. Because if you've spent time with architectural guidelines, they're robust. There's a lot of good guidelines in there.
You guys just have to guide us through it because, again, I just, is this something that is adopted?
Yeah. Yes.
And once adopted, somebody comes in and they flip through this final thing that's been adopted, but it sounded like you're also saying this is also translated into some code.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the, the idea is I want you to adopt this. I want you to approve, we want you to approve this because this, this, this provides the basis for us to move forward with some of the code changes that we're going to be proposing. And this also will be used at some point in the future when somebody comes in and proposes a development and we go, well, you know, come in with a conditional rezoning like we talked last time. And we start to look at what the provisions and recommendations are in here and that's where we can start, well, it doesn't line up with that. The same thing applies to the Village Place, was this one, yeah, Village Place Small Area Plan. So it also kind of starts with this. So when somebody come, we're taking the small area plan, we're putting it into the form place doc, form, form-based code document, which in turn gets moved into the Pinehurst Development Ordinance. But all these documents are relevant. They're relevant all the time. So when somebody comes in, when we pass, when we start working on the, the code updates, you're going to look at it, you're going to go, well, does that say so in here? Is that, is that what the recommendation is? Or somebody comes in in the future and goes, you know, I don't like that zoning. I don't, I don't like the way the form-based code lies up, I, or lines up. I want to do something else. We're going to pull up these documents and go, well, there's nothing in these documents remotely similar to what you're proposing. So that you can use as part of your legislative decision-making process to approve or deny it. So that's really the importance of these documents. Every single one of these documents is important and every single one has a purpose. Kind of like our comp plan. A lot of times when we're talking about any, any type of development that we don't have a small area plan for, what do we look at? We look at the comp plan. We look at what does the focus area say, you know? So, you know, they're all relevant.
Do we need a public hearing?
Yes, not on, not on this. When we actually do the P D O amendments, we are going to need to have public hearings.
And, and the, and the new, and the overlay because the zoning map will need to change as well.
Alex, keep your microphone up, please.
Would the, would the P D O amendments have to comply with this, which has not had a public hearing?
No, they're, they'll be consistent with this. So this, this is not, this is not what we're going to regulate off of. The P D O is what we're going to regulate off of. We're using this to write the P D O amendments.
It's important that we get this part right.
Correct. That is correct. That's why, you know, when I said, I want you to approve this in some form. So if, if there's something that's wholly objectionable in here, which I know you'll find, so if there is something like that, we have to have a discussion on that. Okay? All right.
Has the Historic District Commission seen this?
They have not yet and, and we've probably, you know, we can go that direction, but we wanted to take it from P N Z to the Village Council to see what you feel about this document and then we can move it out.
And, and was this put together with the standards of our historic district folded in?
The standards that are within, the standards that are proposed within here are more, I would say they're more robust.
They're more prescriptive than anything that are in the historic standards. So yes.
But are they, are they going to create something that looks like what our historic standards are trying to preserve or are they going to look like a Midwestern mall?
No, they're not. They're not. They, they, you still, even though we're going to have these standards in place, the vast majority of Village Place area is still within the historic preservation is.
Well, I'm asking.
Yeah. They still have to go to C O A.
In with, with our historic standards or do, are, do we develop these completely independently?
To the best of our ability when we've been reviewing and we will have to go through this once more, we're doing, trying everything we can to not create any conflict between the two.
And all along it's been for this area to be an extension of our downtown.
Yeah.
It's built into the, the assumptions that we're.
And if you look at the, and if you look at the design standards, the, the architectural design standards were drafted in part based on that to try and get that historical look. But we always have, what we have the backstop is, is somebody's going to come in, we adopt the, we adopt the design guidelines, right? So somebody comes in with a development, they're going to, they're going to look at chapter four or five, or three, or whatever chapter it is, and they're going to go through those guidelines and they're going to develop to that guidelines. And they're going to come in with a proposal. That proposal is going to have to go through and get a, and get a C O A approval from the H P C. So whatever they come up with is going to have to be deemed congruous with the district.
So this has got.
And this is more robust. Like I said, there's more.
So this, 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 here's how we want the roads to look. Here's how we want the, what size we want the lots to be, the different types of zoning uses that we want to see throughout the different blocks of the area.
Correct.
And, but then it also, and, and how much landscaping you're going to have. But then it also has a layer, and this is the robust layer apparently of, of not just the mass and height and dimensions of buildings, but also the architectural detailing of buildings. And that's where I'm wondering if you have been able to mesh with the standards in the H P C standards or, or not.
Because the va, the vast majority of the standards with, the vast majority of the development within, within Village Place is going to be, is going to be commercially, it's going to be probably commercial, non-residential. And we just don't, within the H P C guidelines, there's, there's not a lot of, we don't have a lot of prescriptive elements with respect to, to commercial guidelines.
It, it's more, our current commercial historic districts, design standards are more general, you know, shall be consistent with other buildings within the district, shall be compatible with other commercial structures within the district. You've got to screen your mechanical equipment, make it look nice. You know, those very overarching type tones and elements within the district for the overall congruity where this is going to be more, it, there's some materials, standards as well, but you have to use these type of materials.
Yeah.
Your port railings have to be exactly.
Let me, let me give you the, you know, let me give you an example of that. Exterior walls, construction materials. Walls shall be stone, cast stone, precast concrete, architectural concrete block, brick, wood clapboard siding or cemented siding. And then we have things like building walls between the foundation and the eve shall be no more than two materials. Material changes shall occur along a horizontal datum or a common line. Additionally, lighter, lighter materials shall be above heavier materials. So we get really specific, wherein the, we're in the commercial H P C standards, they don't get as specific as these standards do. So anything that comes out of here still has to go before the, before H P C and go, get granted a, get granted a certificate of appropriateness.
It's also true that not all of this is in, within our historic district.
That's correct.
Right, so we have to keep that in mind regarding how this code. And it's also true that in the end, the applicant's going to have to satisfy both requirements.
And they're not going to.
Your point about exterior materials, if, if one of those menu of available options is acceptable based on the form-based code, but it's not acceptable based on our historical district standards, then you can't use it.
That's, this is a very helpful discussion to see how we're covering between different documents, the P D O, the historic district.
Yeah. Good, thanks, Janeford. I want to, the council in June approved the Village Place Small Area Plan.
Correct.
And you all in the planning and zoning board took that and put together the form-based codes from that with, with consideration of other documents, our comprehensive plan and so forth. But that was the core that you drew to get to this.
Correct.
And as Lydia went through, after we make some changes and bless this and so forth, it will be put in a final form because it's a draft now. It'll come back to us or does it make a trip through the planning and zoning board again?
Well, I, I guess it depends on the extent of the changes that you'd like to see. So I guess we're going to play that by ear if there, if it's, a whole chapter needs to be rewritten. Well, yeah, I'm going to probably want to, we would probably want to take it back to the planning and zoning board. If it's some minor changes, probably, probably not.
There's some big issues they would need to get another set and then it would come back to us.
Correct.
And then once adopted, that's what people have to abide by, live by?
Correct.
And, okay.
Like they do every day.
Okay, I, I did read through it. It's very thorough and I do have some suggestions, some comments, and I think most of them are minor, but I have a couple of significant. So when you get to the page that interests me, I will let you know.
And that's why we're here. And I'm not going to go, for sake of time, I'm not going to go over every, every single page. So I'm going to go over the, I'm going to go over the.
If that's the case, let me start on, on one C.
Well, wait, I think, I think, I think Darren and Alex have maybe some specific areas that have been for discussion they want to bring to our attention. We should let them do that because it's probably going to touch on some of the questions that some of us may have. So I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear that because it'll bring us maybe a little more up to date than the actual document itself. Is that, would that be fair?
So, yeah, what we're looking at, I mean, again, this is an introduction to, you, you haven't had, we haven't done this yet before you. If a lot of it is editorial, minor stuff, we can handle that separately. We don't need to get into it right here. I want to get into some of the major, there's a couple of major things that, that we're going to get to tonight. So let me, let me just start out and those, this is the cover page, January 2023, final draft V1. So this, this is how, how the code is laid out. So we have an introduction. We have a site design. The site design is probably one of the more, one of the more important docu, one of the more important sections of this because it starts to lay out, that's where the regulating plan is. That is where some of the lot standards are. So that is where you have a lot of, a lot of material things that will be, become a part of a, become part of the code. Street design, that, that's, it's a smaller chapter, but it lays out because, because the street environment is a very important environment in, in a form-based code. Landscape design, landscape design talks a little bit about, you know, we're going to set aside X amount of land per development for open space, not open space in stormwater, stormwater ponds, not open space. It's supposed to be more usable open space like parks, things like that, little green areas. So there, there's a, there's a set aside in there. We get to chapter five and that's the architectural design and we get into both commercial and residential. And again, there's a lot of standards in there. And I think there's, that's 17 pages of standards. So there's a lot in there. Signage, signage is more of a, that's more of a public sign, sign thing. It doesn't get, it doesn't get into the individual, things like the P D O has some of the individual restrictions, but we would refer back to chapter five. Chapter five actually has some signed design standards. And then chapter seven is some of the definitions. There's some definitions in here that, you know, when you're reading through it and you go, I don't know what an active frontage is. I don't know what a vista is or things like that. We have, we have a definition section to, to handle some of that. So this, this was, you know, when we, this was taken from the Village Place Plan. This is kind of that bird's eye rendering of, of the future build-out. Again, future potential build-out of the area. This will be over a number of years, but you can see how, how the buildings are, you know, we're proposing those streets around, around the brewery, you know, that core kind of crossroads. And then you start to see how the, how the buildings are, are set up, you know, are, are developed to them. So you, you have, you have built, we're proposing build two lines as part of, as part of this and the lot, the lot standards. So you can just start to see, you know, what, when we, when we started to develop the code, you know, it was keeping this kind of development form, form in mind. So that's really, that's, and that's kind of why that's in there because this is kind of the, the long-term 50, 70 years down the road, what this could look like. So then we get at this page, 2.1, was it 2.1 overview? This is kind of that rendering that shows the crossroads. This is a detail plan that this shows, you know, again, we take the crossroads around the brewery and we show how development, if the roads were able to get in here, how we would like the roads, how we would like the development to respond to the roads based on setbacks. So we're proposing build two lines in it, you know, we want, and we want the, all the parking to be behind, be behind the buildings, you know? We don't want parking lots in front of the buildings like you do see in the, in the area right now. So this is just kind of that detail plan. So you can see what, when we start to show you what the lot standards are, this is kind of the idea of why we have the lot standards and the setbacks. Any questions on this particular image?
Yeah, I have one question. I was trying to figure out the, I guess you call it rear loaded when you're parking behind a building. I was trying to figure out not the impact on the commercial area, but the impact on the residential area and what does that do to lots and so forth?
The intent with the rear loaded, you can see it right over here.
Yeah, that's where, that's where.
So, so you look at the, the tradition site.
Yeah.
And this is all showing rear loaded. So you have, you know, potentially townhouse development over here, rear loading to an alley. Even the stuff along Graham here, you can see, you can see the, it's detached and they're showing garages in the back. So that's the intent is to try and get everything off that front street and move it to an intern, some.
When you're pointing to that front street there, is that, are people parking on Cadell or are they parking on that other street?
Well, they're going to park on Cadell, but when, when you're visiting something like that, but the actual, the actual garage, the way it appears, that all loads from the back, off this back alleyway.
So their front door is really.
Cadell.
Cadell. And to park, they're coming through the Magnolia it looks like and, and getting it parked.
In concept, that's a whole concept with the rear loaded. It's not to have a bunch of parking lots between the building and the street and a bunch of parking lots.
I get the concept. What I'm trying to figure out in my head is what does that do to the lot arrangement? How these lots are platted and so forth? It seems, it, it seems like a, you know, significant change to someone who may have been planning to put something there.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the, that, that actually follows pretty much the original kind of concept. They had, they had townhouses around the entire thing and it was all being internally loaded to, to this area. But I, I think there's another good example of that if you go over to Walker Station. Walker Station, a lot of that stuff is rear loaded in, in Walker Station and all loads off an alley. So that is a concept. You don't want all those, you don't want all those driveway openings along the street because that creates another conflict.
Green with you. I'm just trying to figure out.
Yep.
What, what that, because you've got a big slope there, you've got a, it's a, the topography is a little.
It's an engineer's nightmare, yes.
All right. Thank you.
And is, is, is there a minimum parking standard?
Yes.
And because I, I don't, I didn't see it in here.
You don't need it in there. We still have the P D O parking standards. So those still apply.
Apply to all the different uses?
That's correct.
Because I, I was wondering the same thing. If you have a house, a titchy little lot that's only 24 feet wide.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Which works.
The whole thing is taken up with building and, and maybe there's a garage in the back and maybe there isn't, maybe there's just a parking pad.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, maybe the, the people who reside there can park their cars in the back, but if they, can't think, delivered from Amazon or, you know, or if they have somebody over for tea or something like that, where is that person going to park?
They park on, they park on, they, they would park, you know, in this case that you'd be parking on Cadell. That's where, that's where you'd be parking.
I'm surprised that they would front on Cadell. I, I would have thought that they would, if, if it's townhouses that they would, they would front on a central.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to. I mean, this is just illustrative. This, this can change.
The rear loading thing.
Well, then they're going to.
Other way around.
They might have difficulty. So therein, therein lies a, a potential conditional rezone because they can't meet the, the loading standard, right?
So that's how that would be handled?
Rezone? Or would they get a variance or what would, how would that work?
Uh, depends on how we set up the code.
Okay.
All right. Now you're getting, you're getting into the design point and again, this is just showing a concept. The concept is we want buildings fronting the street. We want a certain, we want a setback, you know, we want to build two line to maintain that uniformally along the street. We want the parking in the back in general, and that's basically how we're setting up the code. And this is just, again, it's an, it's an illustration of a possible future that was somewhat based on, because we provided it, we provided the traditions, we configure our, our site plan, this kind of lines up the way the tradition site plan was, was actually, was actually set up. It's just as, instead of having town, attached townhouses, it has single-family detached structures. That's it. And the other thing on, on this one, you see the detail plan, phase two of the green site over here, you can see that, that, that is actually. And the other thing on, on this one, you see the detail plan, phase two of the green site over here. You can see that, that, that is actually. That was actually matches what was previously approved from a, from a foundation footprint standpoint for the greens to site. So you can see there's, there's some actual things that, that were based on, that are based on reality within this plan.
With respect to that, that building and, and other commercial areas. It, it mentions in here that, that, uh, medical uses would be permitted. But of course, the other half of the green site, that building. Is zoned currently, so is not to permit medical uses there because. Medical uses require an enormous amount of. Parking. They have a lot of turnover and they have, um, they generate a lot of traffic. And so. I'm, I'm concerned to see that, as I read through the plan, that, that medical uses are, are presumably going to be permitted throughout. And I thought that that was something that we, we didn't want to do.
Um, no, I mean, we had, when we talked about this, oh God, over a year ago. We talked about allowing medical up on upper rattlesnake. In offices up on upper rattlesnake, just south of the shorts, quick stop. So that, and that is where we, we had talked about having exclusive offices in this district. Now that, the other part that you're, that you're missing out on is we've spent the plant, planning and zoning board spent, and we're going to get, you're going to see a snapshot of this. But we, we worked on a land use table for this entire, and here, let's go, let's go to the next page now. All right, here, the regulating plan. So this is the regulating plan. So this is one of those important documents. That establishes building type, which is almost a use. It establishes where active frontage should be, which is this red area, these red areas in here. And then it establishes building heights. So if you look on this map and you, in your plan, which is on page, what page is that? 19 or, I don't know. Page is that?
Page nine.
Page nine. I had a nine right in it. So this is a very important document because this is going to dictate some land use. So what happened is we, we, we took this regulating plan and we broke this out by block. And so we created these, we created a, a mini regulating plan within this regulating plan by creating an upper, upper rattlesnake. Lower rattlesnake neighborhood, core area. And then we had Clark and we had the tradition site kind of as outliers. So what happened is we spent a work session or two going over each one of these blocks, A, B, C, D, all the way up through what? M, what a, M. And we went down and we went through the table of uses and said, do we want this use here? Do we want this use here? Do we want this use here? Or, you know, so we went through the whole gamut of uses within our P D O, within, within the use district. And we created our own recommended table of uses for that area. So for example. If you start to look at the uses that are allowed right now via the P D O in this core area. We would allow single family uses. We'd allow two family uses. We would allow multiple family uses. So we would allow all these uses. That if we allowed a bunch of single family within this area, it'd be contrary to what we're trying to lay out. Contrary to the environment that we're trying to create in this area because the V M U allows all those, all those types of uses. So what we would do is we would back those out. We're, we're proposing to back those out and narrowing the uses that are, that are currently allowed in that area. So we, we spent a lot of time narrowing up the uses to match what the idea was for uses in, in the future based on the plans.
So that, that's, um. That's helpful to, to hear. As I've been, been asking all through this process, what's the density going to be? And. I, I hope to hear now. What the density would be compared to if we had left the form base, the, excuse me, the regular P D O zoning in place. What's the, the differential going to be? One of the things that says on page two of this plan is that. There's, there's a purpose here to increase revenues and the tax base. But of course. That's only helpful if you're, if the increase in the tax revenues is going to keep pace with. The increased demand for municipal services. So I'd be interested in that balance. With the change of uses that's being proposed and the density that's being proposed. I mean, I'm looking at the. Lot sizes. And, and there's, gosh, there's an awful lot of little tiny lots. So that, that's where, and I, you know, I'm not able to. Estimate. Sitting there by myself chewing the end of my pencil. The. Projected density. From this plan versus what it would have been under the current zoning. But I'd be interested to hear. How that shakes out.
But there are some ceilings, Jane, that seem to be placed on the density. When I, when you look at this, you have. One to two story.
Correct.
Two to three. So they're, they're putting a bit of a lid in some places. Am I, was that correct?
You're correct. That, that, and that is something that, that's a significant point, Patrick. And I'm glad, glad you brought that up. So if you look at the regulating plan, you look at. What the current zoning allows within that V M U area, which is this area, and I think part of this area, right Alex? Or somewhere up there. Yeah. So that would be allowed right now, the proposals. Right now, the P D O allows up to 50, 50 feet of building, 50 feet of building height. We're, we're proposing as part of this regulating plan to retract that down, I think to, to two stories here in this area. And one to, or two to three in this area. So there are things like that, that you're, that we're, it's a significant impact. On development in that area because you can't get as high a building as the current P D O, as the current P D O allows. So. I had one other point that I got.
That brings me to one quick question.
Oh, a lot, hold on. What, what, one, one thing, Jane, on the lot sizes, the lot sizes in the plan. The, the inspiration going forward on this was we wanted to extend the village, the village center. So if, when you start to look at the regulations and the zoning in the village center or village, village commercial. That's what we're lining up with. We're lining up with, with what's in the current, you know, the current village center area. That is what the zoning is in line with it.
Okay, okay. Um, now, um, I'm just trying to find my notes so I can give you a page number.
Which one? This one?
One question I had was. When you say that one to two stories will be permitted or one to three stories will be permitted. How do dormers figure into that? Because. Many, if not almost all of the. Pictures in here show buildings that have dormers on them. And dormers can, can turn an attic into another story of living space. So my question is, when you say. Two stories, does that mean two, two stories plus an attic with big enough dormers that it's really three stories?
Well, then it's a three story building. If, if, if it's designed such that that attic, which is not an attic after all, it's a, it's a story. It becomes a three story building.
Because there's, and I apologize for not being able to find my note, uh, with my page number, but I will find it eventually. And then, oh, it's on page 52. If you look at page 52.
You're in the architectural standards?
Yeah, but that's where the picture is. It shows two different, um, hotels. And each one of them, if you just look at it, appears to be. Two stories with then an attic that has a bunch of dormers. And the, the top building says it's a two story building. And the lower picture says it's a three story building. So, but it looks as though there's use of the third story on both buildings.
They're probably, I mean, those dormers on the, on the top building probably aren't, that, you can see the roof line. The roof line looks like it's smaller. It's not, it's not a large enough area to, to actually create an occupiable space the way I'm looking at it. And it's just, those dormers are there to add an architectural feature to that building.
Let's, let's make sure that we understand, that everybody understands that we, we articulate that so that people. Know what we mean.
And, and, and just on the second floor, or the one below, that is a three story building because you can see. That, that, that the roof line is high, high enough that it creates a high enough space that, that creates a habitable floor.
Little disclosure, I have stayed in that three story building, Woodstock Vermont. So it's, it's a very nice building. But, um, I see, I see what Jane's point is that there is a distinction between that building, the Woodstock Vermont building, which is a. Third floor that is a livable third floor. And the, the, the two story building, which is, uh, uh, you know, those are sort of. Fake, fake windows or whatever you want to call them up there. There may be, there may be some storage space, but it's not a livable third floor. Is that, isn't that a fair assumption to say there?
That's the difference. Yes. It's not, it's not considered.
That's most appropriately addressed with height restrictions. Right? The places that are zoned for two story will have a lower height restriction than the places that are zoned for three story.
This document says there aren't going to be any. Height limitations in feet, that the building height will all be decided by number of stories. Which is why I thought, well, let's figure.
Well, our number of stories is still going to be, yeah.
So, so we, we have to somehow decide what do you mean? Attic space.
Yeah, correct.
And articulate it.
The intent, the intent, if it says one to three would mean a three story building. That's, that's really it. It'd be a three story building. If it's a two, if it's a maximum of two, that's it. You get two. You don't get that third floor like, like you get in on page 52 on the bottom. You don't get that. All right. Move on. Okay. Please. All right. So here is, this is the table, Jane. This is your table of uses. This is what we spent a lot of time on. Going through at the planning and zoning level. And you can see the level that we went to. We, we broke the whole area down by block. And you can see we color coded each block by the, by the type of area, core area, lower, lower rattlesnake. When Dave and Megan were talking about where, where, where we were talking about, we could have said, oh, that's lower rattlesnake. Uh, so you've got lower rattlesnake, you've got upper rattlesnake, and that's way up towards 211. So this is where we break everything down. And this is where we start refining the uses that are allowed. So you've all been through the use table, chapter, what is that? 8.5, table 8.51A. So you've all been through it. What we're going to do is we're going to narrow up what's currently allowed in that table. To more specific and prescriptive uses within the village place area. Keeping in mind the, what, what, what type of environment that we're trying to create. This is just one page. I didn't do the whole thing. The whole thing is sitting here and it's. One, two, three, four, five. It's five pages, five pages of table uses. So. You know, when we get to it, when we're actually writing the code, you know, based on the input that we had from the planning and zoning board, that will make itself. Into the table, into the table of uses for that district. All right. Keep moving, John. So here's, here's another, and I, I apologize. I didn't think it'd wash out like this, uh, when I started, when I made this presentation today, but this is, uh. This is continuing on in that chapter. So what it, what it's talking about up here on the upper left, this is the lot types. So there's several different lot types. There's the rear loaded commercial. There's live work. There's single family attached. There's cottage. There's villa and there's manor. So each of those corresponding lot types has an image in, in the, in the plan set here. So this one, just on the right. This one simply shows the, the, um, what that rear loaded commercial lot could potentially look like. It shows the setback line and that setback line is a build two line. That's saying, we don't want you to build too far. We want you to build, what is, what does that say, Alex? Is that 20 or is that 10 feet? I think it's 10 feet. So it says your, your, your setback on this line is going to be 10 feet. You have to build to 10 feet. That's it. So that's what you'll see a lot of in this code, build two lines. And there's a lot of that in there. Then, then we talk about. We're parking on the backside, you know, what, what type of setback you need to have if you're going to have parking, things like that. So there are some design standards. In each of the, in each of those lot types that are in, that are, that are within, within the plan itself. And again, when, when I show you this. Grab this. When I show you this in a minute, all those, all those standards. Are on this sheet of paper, which is, which is, uh, which is the. Table 9.2, table of dimensional uses, the thing that you wanted to get to on setbacks, lot size. You know, all that kind of stuff. That, all that stuff makes it into a table. And I, I will, will show, and I'll show it. That's in the presentation as well.
And is there a regulatory difference between single family attached and multi-family?
Yes. Single family attached is single family. It's, it's a one single family unit that's attached to another separate single family unit. So usually what it is, it, there's a property line. It there, it's like a, it's a townhouse style development. So there's, there's individual property lines.
That, that's, that's how the ownership works. But, but when we regulate. Are we allowed to regulate single family attached structures the same way we can regulate multi-family?
It, it depends when you get to the, the number of stories and the number of units per building. But in, in all likelihood, it, there will be subject to the one and two family code, just like single family. But again, a lot, a large part of this is also. In the historic district where we will have that opportunity to have that design control.
Is that, that's kind of key.
That is kind of key, but what, you know, you can have it in the plan as a recommendation, but you could. Not potentially allow it on the ground with the use and make somebody have to. And there's not, there's actually, within the village place, there's not a lot of areas where you can actually put single family attached. The only place that you can really put single family attached. My recollection, the plan recommendation is that V R area, the tradition site. Everything else is going to be non-res, is going to be non-residential. Right? Well, there's that stuff behind Board Branch Road, right? Is that Board Branch?
What about lower?
Nope.
That's all commercial?
Yep. Lower rattlesnake is all, is all non-residential, right? Yes. Where it's supposed to be.
Could a mixed, could a mixed use building? Ever end up being all residential?
No, because that's not mixed use. As defined by our code. Trust me, it can't. All right. Can't. Let me move on. So here, here's some additional lot standards. So I think this is, that one looks like a cottage lot up on the upper left. And on the right, that it looks like a manor type lot. So you can just see the cottage lots are going to be, they're going to be, they're cottages. So it's going to be narrower. Again, this would, this would align with some of the stuff that's out in Walker Station. And then you get into the manor type lots, you start to see. Detail, you know, they just get a little bit wider. And I didn't put the villa on there. The villa actually has, has an attached. There's one type of lot, the villa, right? Villa that has attached garages. This Jane, this is, takes all that previous, all that previous.
How come we didn't get the good pages in our package?
Because I, I wanted you to focus on this first. The concept first, because otherwise, otherwise I'm going to spend two hours on this. So I, I want, I want. I want, I, I wanted to get the concept here. So we can get back to this. All right. So this is that table. So the table that we've taken all the standards. That, that you've just seen in the lot standards in that, and we've put it all on the table. Everything in red is on a table. So each of them, you know, we have. What you'll see, and you're, I think, I thought I sent this out, but. Eight, so we start to see minimum landscape area, eight percent. Then we start to see minimum lot size, 5,000 square feet. We start to see setbacks. So this is where all that height, see the regulating plan. So this is where all that material ends up going. When we create an, an actual special district for this area. Again, all these lots are numbers right now. They, it doesn't mean things can change. This is our proposal based on, based on implementing the, the village place plan, but they're numbers. Numbers can change. But when you see it, when, when we get, when we give you this, this table, what you can see is we, we've lined up all the comparative existing. Zoning districts within the community and put them on the same page. And then the inspirational district, which we used. In laying out the, the, the standards for this, which was the village commercial district right here. So we'll get you, we'll get, I, I thought we had sent this out at one point and we'll, we'll get it. We'll send it out tomorrow or the end of the week. Questions on that? Not yet.
I can't see it from here, so.
Do the. The concept.
Next point.
I'll, I'll set it up. All right. So this is, this, this talks about buildings have different frontage elevations. And what happens is we have different standards for the frontage elevations that are on streets. And what's important there is we want to make sure that we have a standard, that you have enough windows and doors and fenestration and on some of these elevations. have enough windows and doors and fenestration and on some of these elevations, so you don't have, you don't end up with, like on this wall, on this elevation, just a one-blank wall. So it's just things like that. So it's just, there's different standards based on what elevation you might have.
Now, now, hold on. This is the first time I've seen a four-story building in a drawing.
There's a four-story, I can't...
There may be others, but I...
This is not, Kelly, can you back that up for me?
Page 17.
Really? Right here? Oh, Kelly, can you, thank you.
Technically, I think it's a dormer.
Yeah, that's a dormer. Good point, yes, that's a good point. That is a dormer. It's not a four, and it's for illustrative purposes only.
It's not a four? But all our code, all the codes you have put in here so far have been two-to-three-story.
That's a three-story building.
Uh-uh. You take a look at the height.
Yeah, I think that's the first time I've seen, as opposed to if you go down below, down below, you do have a three-story with the dormer.
It's, it means, first of all, it's not a story. Secondly, it means nothing in the context of anything. What you need to look at is the frontage elevate, look, you need to look at these words. These are words that are on here, frontage elevations. This is not getting into heights. This doesn't regulate heights of the building. This regulates what type of architectural treatment you have to have if you have this type, a certain type of elevation.
I understand, but...
This does nothing to regulate height.
I understand, but it's not a dollhouse here that we're building. This is, again, it's a visual, and going by one to three, I bought off on the earlier one, on that three. That's the first time I've noticed it being four, anywhere. So I just, I'm asking you to take a look at that, okay?
And I'm quite a straight shooter, but if I were a smarty pants, I'd point to this and say, why don't you let me have a bunch of dormers and a big high roof, high attic, and then I could, you know, I'd just put storage up there.
No, no. Still, it would not fly. First of all, I could, you know, if you want, and I don't know if we can do this, I can just pull the, I can just pull the dormers off, and you're going to see a large hip roof.
To draft, you can correct this, Darren, but I'm telling you, that one jumped out.
Okay, all right. Let's make a note of that. All right. Yeah, right, right. All right. So street design, Chapter 3, Street Design. This is a smaller chapter, but we talk about the complete streets concept. And I know that, you know, sometimes that throws us all off the complete streets. All it is, is complete streets are meant for everybody. They're meant for the bicycles, they're meant, we design streets for everybody. Bicycles, pedestrians, cars, golf carts, all that. So that's what the concept is. We don't design just for the automobile. So in this one, we have an overview, we talk about complete streets. Then we get into two street types. We have commercial street types, and we have residential street types. And what we're saying is, here, we want you to design to these street types, and so we have a standard. And then we have some material and element standards in there. So basically, when I say that we design the streets for certain, for everybody, we talk about where the building zone is. So in a form-based code, we don't just look at the use, we don't just look at the building, but we look at the relationship between the building and the street. So the building zone is that area between the front of the building and the street. What do we allow in there? What type of hardscaping do we allow in there? Do we allow benches? Do we allow that kind of stuff? So that's an important element. The pedestrian zone, that's where your sidewalk goes. Tree zone, terrace, we talk about parking, parallel parking is preferred, travel lane, and then the amenity zone. The amenity zone is where, it's an optional zone where you can put benches, and you can put other things. A lot of times, they just put it near the pedestrian or the tree zone, but this could be an additional zone. That's it. And then we have two, then we have the two-dimensional standards for street types. You can see within here, this is how the dimensions of the street line up, how the widths of the lane, the widths of the building zone, tree zone, all that kind of stuff.
Are we talking about streets now? Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
I have very serious concerns about the layout of the streets, as I see them on page 22, and I also have concerns about the alleys, which I'll mention afterwards. Wide sidewalks with the landscaping elements and the amenities is all fine and large, okay? But the narrow 10-foot-wide travel lanes, 10 feet is the width of a parking space, and those travel lanes on a street, which looks like a, you know, commercial street, and it's got the big wide sidewalks, so presumably, you know, supposed to have a lot of people there, those very narrow travel lanes, an ordinary travel lane is going to be more like 12 feet, yes?
Depends on the speed.
No, it's not.
And...
We don't have a single village street that's 12 feet, except for downtown.
So what they, let me just spit it out here. So what we've got on these lanes, because the document says they're meant to be narrow, and more narrow than usual, which would ordinarily be 12 feet, it says, is you've got cars, delivery trucks, and bicycles sharing one lane, and then you have, on either side, cars parallel parked. And those parallel-parked cars, when somebody does manage to weave and bob and get themselves into the parking space, they're going to want to open their car door and get out. They're going to have to open it right into the travel lane. And if they've got a child in a car seat in the back, they're going to want to open that back door and, you know, struggle with getting Junior out of the car seat, which can take some time, I happen to know. And it just seems to me to be unsafe to squeeze up the vehicular portion of this in that way. You've got all the space for the sidewalks, which is great, but then you've squeezed up the vehicular part, which is the dangerous part. So we were talking about Market Square before, and one of the concerns we had was that because we've got buildings already there, the width we have to work with between the buildings in which to fit parking and travel ways and sidewalks is limited. And that would also be the case if we already had a cityscape there, and we were trying to do urban renewal. We have buildings already there, unless you tear the buildings down, the width of your street is limited. But here we have the luxury of starting from scratch. And why wouldn't we have nice wide sidewalks and nice wide streets and nice parking along the streets, angled or head-in parking, so that when you pull into your parking space, you can get out of the car without stepping immediately into the travel lane? You can get your child out without being in the travel lane. I mean, I'm thinking about Southern Pines, and being down there, and you pull into an angled parking space and you get out of the car. When you make your purchases, you can get back into the car.
But what flexibility do we have on this? The only thing I'm concerned about so far is a little bit narrowness, as Jane's pointing out of this, these particular streets, but should we be concerned about that right now or not?
No, because you're not, I mean, this is the recommended design at this point, is we're developing it, but we're not, there's no streets being developed at this point, so you're still going to, you're still going to have a crack at it.
I don't like this at all.
But you're just, it's, I'm going to tell you that 10 feet is not too narrow. When you're talking 12 feet, you know what, you're talking on 12 feet, you're talking about probably the width of an interstate, of the interstate highway, and why is it 12?
Is it 12 feet?
Make room for...
Jeff, you had a...
Highways are 12 feet. Most of our streets are between eight and nine feet lane width.
Jeff, can you tell us, nine feet is the standard size for a street, downtown street?
Sounds about, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be interested in what the actual data is. I see what Jane is saying, but I'm going to look at it from a different angle, and that is not for the, you're thinking about the customer.
Right.
Okay. I'm just wondering, from the commercial enterprise, that's thinking of putting a business there, whether they are going to find it a more difficult way to get customers in and out of their enterprise if the street isn't a little wider. It's just a thought. I mean, I hadn't thought about it until you all started discussing this.
I think that we're focused on the streetscape here, and we're forgetting about all the rear parking, where most of the customers are going to park.
I hadn't thought about that.
And it's more, the other thought about it is, it's more pedestrian-oriented in there. You don't, the wider, the wider you make streets, the more you promote speeding and faster traffic. It's also harder to get across when you're trying to cross as a pedestrian anywhere throughout the district. So those are, part of it is a traffic calming measure. You don't want people flying through those areas.
I agree. I do think we just need to do a little due diligence precisely on this space. When you mentioned Southern Pines, it registered with me. I never, that's one of the easy places to park.
Yeah.
Okay? And you're not dinging your neighbor, and there's plenty of turnover, and I've seen, you know, parents with car seats and all that, where it seems to be a more challenging effort sometimes in Pinehurst, though not in Chinkopin, coming downtown. But you're dealing a lot now, too, with moms with vans, and...
Yeah.
But anyway, it's worthwhile to just do a little more work on it, but I don't have a real strong feeling.
I'm concerned about the bicycles, too. I mean, why, if we're trying to make it multimodal, why isn't there a bike lane? Why are they intermingled with the cars?
Because in this environment, in the slower-street environment, you can have, you can have, you can have a chero.
Microphone.
You can have a chero.
I'm having trouble hearing everybody. Speak up to your microphones, please.
Downtown speeds, bikes are very safe to be intermingled with cars.
In downtown?
Downtown speeds, yeah.
Okay. So I think there's some concern about this sort of layout and width.
Sure.
Better rethink that.
We'll find it, sure.
And maybe this is a good moment to just mention the alleys, too, which are, according to the text, even narrower. They're meant to be so that two cars can't pass, you have to wait and take turns. Well, they're shared private driveways, shared private driveways, in my experience, okay, almost 30 years doing land, real estate, land use law, different place, but that is a very common cause of disputes, I'm just going to say. And look at the experience that we have in the Village Center with these private alleyways.
Unplated.
Just used for pedestrians or just used for servicing the buildings. I'm concerned that we would not make them wide enough to accommodate the needs of people without them having to wait and back up and go, and be too small.
It's a low-speed environment.
Why would we, people are going to get mad at each other, and they're going to run over each other's trashcans, and they're going to not want to back up, and they're not going to want to take turns. And it just seems unnecessarily foolish to establish a squeezed-up access system when we have the luxury of being able to plan for something that accommodates.
Darren, you just used the phrase "a low-speed environment," which is a good clarification. So will the speed there be probably 25 miles per hour, or will it be less?
I don't even, in an alley?
No, no, I'm, I've said the alley. I'm going back into the street. Let's talk about the future Village Place.
Well, I get, you want to be at 25, or even, you know, the trend now is to go down to 20. So you're seeing a lot of that in the downtown environments.
And it would be crowded enough that it would require low speed, probably, but...
That's the idea.
All right, now that's another factor.
Now, once again, the alley, the new alleys that we've constructed, again, I'm going back to Walker Station, go to Walker Station, not hearing any problems about mass traffic backups within the Walker Station. It's not happening.
That's just a, yeah, a residential development.
It is a residential development, and there's a lot of trips that occur there every single day.
Yeah, that'd be, that's a reasonable comparison.
But I know it's not a commercial environment, but...
Yeah.
There's a lot of traffic.
One more question with respect to roads.
Jane, before we move on, can I just ask for clarification?
Yeah.
When you're referencing alleys, I think you're talking about page 27.
Also something on page 20.
That's a residential alley, yeah.
On general provisions, it said, the following standard applies to alleys or shared access driveways within Village Place.
I see that.
Alley or shared driveway paving with 16 feet accommodating a two-way yield movement.
That's right.
So as far as, I mean, 16 feet.
It already does accommodate two-way vehicle movement.
Well, two-way yield movement sounds to me like they can't get by.
No, that's two, that's two-way traffic.
What does yield movement mean, then?
Question is whether two vehicles can get, can pass in alleys where they're proposed.
It's page 20, general provisions, number three, first bullet point.
Right, and also on page 27, in the first paragraph of the text.
Yeah.
That, that's what made me think it was...
Well, if you look at the present image on the middle of the photo, too, that's a, that looks like a narrower alley. They're loading off the alley, but then, I mean...
Well, I'd be interested to understand...
Two cars can pass each other in a driveway situation on 16 feet of width, very easily.
Have the Volkswagen Beetle.
Sorry?
I'm betting Jeff and I can do it with our pickup trucks.
If I were you, Dr. Borg, I would get Jeff's pickup truck.
You'd have to collapse your side mirror, but you might get by, yeah.
We could buy.
I think you're hearing here a little issue about alley and some street narrowness. We need to revisit that after we all...
Just need to make them...
I think we need to keep moving here, folks. It's, we've been at this for an hour. Let's keep this moving, because we have a lot of other business to do tonight.
This is a very in-depth overview.
Let me ask about...
Carry on with the overview. Let's let Darren carry on with the overview.
Let me just ask about stormwater.
We're going to get to that, I think. He's probably going to raise that point.
No, we don't, stormwater is what, we have a stormwater ordinance. The stormwater ordinance will apply. So everything will be reviewed for stormwater.
But we don't have a stormwater system. We don't have stormwater, storm sewer pipes that carry the water away underground. We, are we, apparently, we're going to have planters in the sidewalks, and those planters can take some stormwater.
Called green infrastructure.
Water that falls, rainwater that falls in the streets, or that doesn't make it into the, into those planters.
A developer is going to have to come in with a plan, and they're going to have to meet our pre- and post-re requirements for stormwater.
There'll be gutters and...
Whether that's underground or some other way, they have, they're going to have to meet that requirement.
That's correct. And when we design roads, the same thing.
And that should be, that should be spelled out, that that's a requirement. And I agree with that, they should, and we just need to spell it out somewhere.
And I just hope that the street...
Unless it's already in our PDO. I mean, I don't...
Street design...
It applies everywhere in the village. It doesn't have to specifically apply, we don't have to...
It's an overall requirement of all.
Apply it to this plan.
Okay.
There's not exemption.
Make clear which parts of the PDO still apply and which parts don't apply anymore. Because if we have a separate set of rules for this little area, then we're going to have to make sure that we know what other parts of the PDO still apply, and...
The stormwater requirements apply across the village.
You're, right. You're not looking at the actual PDO regulations at this point, or where it's being housed. You're looking at the concept document that we're using to draft those PDO regulations. This, like we showed you, this table, that you couldn't see, this one, that's a PDO regulation. That's taking this, putting it into a PDO regulation. This, the table of uses, once again, that's taking, that's not even in here, actually. We're taking this, and we're refining the uses that can be allowed. This is a PDO thing. So a lot of the requirements that are in here, they're going to make it into the PDO. So all the, you know, we're writing the code to place this into the PDO. You're not seeing that, you're not seeing the minutia of that yet, because we're trying to get, I want you to look at, the questions are...
No, but I'm looking, I'm looking at the overview of this, okay? And this is, this weekend, the first time I've seen it. And so I'm trying to understand how it's going to work, how it's going to segue with what we already have in place, how it's different from what we've already got, and what that we already have is still going to apply. And I'm looking at it, and I'm seeing intricate detail for some kinds of things, and other things that I don't understand how they're going to work.
I'm actually kind of hurt that you haven't been watching the Planning and Zoning Board Special Meetings that we've been having. board and special meetings that we've been having.
I have, have watched some of them. I have not watched them.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna move on.
Please.
Okay, so here's another, we're gonna move through it here, here, you know, we, we spent some time talking about rattlesnake, what rattlesnake looks like now and rattlesnake right now, if you try wa, it's not a very friendly environment to walk down. And then we have the image on the right showing some side pa, some trails or side paths or, or whatever, just that, that it needs to, it needs to get improved from, from a pedestrian standpoint especially. And you could use some plantings along there, things like that. Landscape design, this just, this, this part of the, this part of the, the document talks about, you know, the, the creation of various types of greens, central greens, attached greens, that the fact that the code is recommending that a minimum of 8% be set aside in some type of, some type of active green space. The other, the other, what I think is a really cool part of this chapter, and this is very hard to see, but you can see what page, this is a recommended landscape palette of native trees. So, so this is something that we, this will, this will help in the landscaping requirements. And then we have what we've broken it down to, on, on the right here, we have comments. We have, we have ones that are deer resistant. So we went through the whole planting guide and there's certain deer resistant plants. You know, the other thing we don't have is we don't have a, a recommended set of tr, uh, street trees. Here we put a recommended, a set of street trees by height within this area. So it's a really good plant palette. So I, I think we, they did a good job. We built upon this and added some things to it, so I'm, I'm really happy.
Have you broken out native plants into this as well?
It's ve, it's mostly native plants within there.
Okay, right in that middle column, yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Good.
So, um, the new residential landscape buffers will not apply? That we worked on 2021?
I'm trying to think. It would apply, sure.
You're talking about the dimensional aspects of that, Jane?
Yeah, I'm talking about so many trees.
Yeah.
Per front yard and so many trees per side yard and so many...
Well, then we are gonna run into an issue and we have to think through that, because that front yard, we're gonna have a hard time planting a half, 50% vines in there. So yeah...
Different sized lot.
So in general, it's gonna apply, but now you, you raised a good point, now we have to evaluate that context. Hadn't thought through that.
Okay, and on page 32, under the general provisions for open space, it says that a minimum of 8% of the net developable acreage of any lot shall be open space. And my first question is, what is net developable acreage? Is that the building envelope?
No, I would, see if we define that, I don't even know if we define that.
Okay. And I'm comparing that to the art, our current R10 standards where there is a maximum 40% impervious coverage on a lot, so 8% versus 40%. And when they're talking about open space in this context, apparently it's not necessarily green space. When they talk about open space, they seem to be talking about o, open space that's available to the public, kind of. And I'm wondering if they're talking about providing open space available to the public on private property.
That is, that, that, so if you go to, go to page 34, you go to page 34 and there's four point two, you look at the open space types. This is, the open space types within Village Place may include central green, which is that central green that would be us, that, that we're showing on the plan, plazas, attach, attached greens, pedestrian passages and natural buffer areas. What that's saying is that, is that 8% of each development's gonna have to provide some type of open space and it may fit into one of these, one of these types of categories.
All right, what page is that 8% requirement on?
Page 34.
That's where the 8% is?
No, the 8% is on page 32.
No, the 8% is on page 32, which is the, which is the general provisions.
Yep, and it's, uh, general provisions for open space and item one is approximately 8% of the net developable acreage for any lot shall be open space.
And we don't have, we don't currently have that requirement. It's not, it's not currently a requirement in our code.
But, but we do have maximum impervious coverage is, is, so it's, it's 40%. So another way of saying that is 60% of an R10 lot has to be open.
You're looking, you're looking at our time, R10 lot, you're not looking at a VMU lot as part of that either, again...
No, but I mean, I, I just picked that one out of the hat, because there's a lot of R10 in the area. But in, in the PDO, we do have maximum impervious coverage limits and the inverse of that is how much green space there has to be on a given lot. So are we net losing potential green space if we develop this way from what we would have if we developed?
No, 'cause it's saying a minimum, it's saying, no, it's saying a minimum 8% has to be used for public plaza, central green, attached green, something like that.
So if I have a townhouse, 8% of...
The development, that would be the, for the development. So if somebody comes in, that VR comes, that VR property comes in, the tradition site, they're gonna come in, they're, they're gonna put 8% of that area into some type of public green, attached green, something like that, that'll be, you know, that you see...
Not home, it's not home specific.
No, it's not, that's why...
Development. Is it in fact of any lot or is it of any development?
It would, it would start, I mean, it's gonna go, it's gonna get, accepting the single family infill lots, it would, i, if that is the only thing that's getting development, it's gonna be applied to that, to that lot. Otherwise, what's gonna happen is somebody's gonna come in with a larger development, right? They're gonna come in with maybe 10 lots. That 10 lot development, there's gonna be a, a set aside of 8% of that entire 10 lot development or that entire parcel into an open space thing. You are gonna run into some of the smaller lots where nothing might change, like if you, you think of maybe some of the stuff on rattlesnake, lower rattlesnake, um, a lot might be 8%, and it's not gonna be a heck of a lot, but it's gonna be a set aside. You're gonna run into difficulty with some of the very small lots that get redeveloped. I mean, we can, we can try and work on that and make it clear, but...
When you say very small lots, you mean if, if a developer puts a bunch of lots together, it's 8% of all those lots?
Yes, correct, that is correct.
So they can...
Yeah, I guess we're maybe a little bit troubled by or, or having difficulty understanding why you would have public open space on a single lot.
Residential lot, yeah.
Yeah, I, I never took it as a single lot, yeah.
Well, it could be. What if we, if we've got the, let's, let's take the green site. That's a very large site, right?
Yeah.
So why, a set aside of 8% within that site is gonna be, is gonna be a pretty big number. Even at the corner of Mag, even...
That was a major site plan development. Versus a, versus a, a single...
Right.
Lot development, a subdivided lot.
But, and that's, and maybe we need to be clear...
We can make the distinction.
Maybe there means, needs to be a minimum size, but remember, we have acre size lots, so 8% of acres is gonna be a, is gonna be pretty substantive. But you're right, when it gets to, down to the smaller level, that might be a problem.
Well, yeah, I, I think we need to, I, I would like to have a better understanding of what this does to the available green space, the pervious surface of lots versus what the PDO provides now. And are we, I know we're, we're getting some set aside areas that are meant to be, you know, plazas or, or, you know, little park, pocket parks and stuff like that. But if you look at the development of the commercial buildings and the residential areas, are we gonna end up overall with a lot more pervious surface and a lot less green space? Because we're not gonna have any yards around the houses.
This is, again, most of this isn't houses, this is mostly commercial, but maybe the right way to answer the question though is, Darren, if I, my memory serves me, the right standard for commercial is 70%?
70, 70 to 90, depending on, 70 to 90, depending on the district that you're in.
Whatever it is, would that same standard still apply to this development?
Yes. That's the, I'm looking, I'm looking through the plan right now. Oh, I didn't put it in, so, oh, no, no, no. Yeah, we're just gonna, we just have to make it clear, still have the governor of the impervious base.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
That's a good catch.
Uh, two, two items. One, I wanna thank you for, I just realized both my barber and Maxie's are in the historic district, but Holly's catering is not. So thank you for that diagram, it's the first time I, I caught the, it's a minor distinction, but those of us who live in this area, I hope Holly doesn't feel upset. I am interested when you, a couple of areas. The streets, I'm just gonna head to general, streetscape zone all the way to street lights. I've mentioned before that I thought village, mixed use and village commercial, that utilities that are currently there, that in an undeveloped area should be placed underground. And however that can be worked out with the developer, with Duke Power, maybe with whoever, I, I think we ought to find a place to put, put that somewhere in here. Because otherwise rattlesnake, I drove down it the other day, did my own inventory, there's 20 telephone poles going along the west side and there's 10 going along the east side. There's 30 telephone poles there. Now, if we're gonna have commercial development on the, the west side, it would, and we're gonna have sidewalks and street landscape and street lamps. I, I think it would be a, a nice way to fix that in a permanent reason, in a permanent way, to make that a requirement. We require, as Jeff pointed out, we require stormwater cooperation, right? We're requiring amount of green space.
Require utilities to be put underground as well. I guess the question that's rolling around in my mind is whether or not that would apply to an existing street with existing utilities, and I don't think it would.
Well, can we not change that?
There's a statutory limitation on that.
Uh, if you can, I don't need the answer now.
I, I think the, our code does require, and I'm not sure, I, I don't, 'cause I don't have it before me, our code, somewhere in the site plan, does talk about undergrounding utilities, doesn't it, Alex?
It does, and statutorily, there's some limitations on if, you can't require relocation of, for utilities to be underground if they already exist overhead, but it might be strictly limited to residential subdivisions, so we'll have to double check.
Please check on that. I think we, it's a lost opportunity. If we're gonna do a nice development over there and we're gonna leave a, a bunch of 30 telephone poles down this, what's being portrayed here somewhere, I don't know if I agree with it, but as a new gateway, sort of another link entering the village, we should've put our best foot forward there.
I thought, I thought we had some, I thought we had some recommendations within the actual Village Place plan to talk about undergrounding of utilities and that all utilities shall be placed underground. I think there's something in the plans in that regard.
I, I mean, I think it's obvious in the Village Place core area there, you know, around the brewery, when they're, they're gonna do a first-class operation, they're gonna put their utilities underground. But it's that streetscape gateway that I think we can make a good first...
Darren, I think it is in that original, that I think it is.
I think it's in there, and I think, I think I enhanced it and said I recommended that we have a, a undergrounding, a, a plan for undergrounding street, uh, overhead utilities.
Okay, so underground utilities are important here. Let's see what we do on that. Let's move on.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, architectural design, I'm not gonna spend probably a heck of a lot. There is a lot in here.
Ain't it, yeah.
There's a, there's a lot of require, and we get down to here by building types, multiple family, retail...
What page on you?
Uh, I don't know, I can't read that.
We're in 51, 52.
50s, yeah.
It's, it's in the 50s.
Yeah, I'm just looking to see where my notes are, go ahead.
So we get in here and we have non-residential and we have residential building types and we start to, here's where we start to use heavier use of illustrations, right? Because illustrations are very helpful when people are looking at code. And this is where we talk about signage, we talk about materials, we talk about fenestration, we talk about windows lining up. It, there's a lot of, there's a lot of recommendations in here. So that's why we'll be proposing that we incorporate these recommendations going forward. I don't know, we, we talk about, you know, where the building is situated and if you've got a porch that the porch has, if you're in a corner lot, the porch has to wrap around a minimum of two bays, things like that. There are a lot of, there are a lot of substantive, there's, these are robust. So I, it's, it would take a long time to go through that. Signage, signage is, signage is mostly, we're gonna defer back to the code, there's some storefront design stuff with it, within, within chapter five, but there's also some other public signage, where we talk about families of signs, when we do, you know, we do things like, like banners and we talk about entry signs, like here's an entry sign to, that we're using for the historic preservation. Here are, here are certain signs for entrances to subdivisions. So that just talks about, we need to think about that, to have some type of uniformity throughout Village Place in some of this public signage.
And I think those signs should match what we already have, unless we wanna change everything.
Correct.
Which I don't think we would, yeah.
Correct, and that's, and I, I think that's what's getting at...
The whole signage and printing and all, yeah.
Correct, John. And then we have, then we have a short definition session at the end of the document. And then I return to regulating plan.
I have a few random questions, can I shoot them out?
Sure.
So live-work.
Yep.
On page 12, it says that, that live-work is a, is first floor retailer office, the upper levels are residential and that, that these buildings are owned and occupied by the same person. But on page 53, it says, well, that's typically, but it might not be that way. So, so what is it about live-work that's different from regular old mixed-use?
Live-work unit is like a, think of a, think of a townhouse style development. So with a townhouse style development, you have a building, you have the narrower building walls and it, and it's on one property, that's the same concept with the live-work unit, whereas with a mixed u, typical mixed-use building, the whole building envelope is one, is under one ownership.
Jane, can I, I, I think you're thinking that it, the person who lives above the store has to own and work in the store. Is that what you're saying?
That's what it says.
I don't think that's where we're headed here. I don't know how you can mandate that.
That's what it says.
That is, that is the concept of a live-work, yeah.
That, that was the concept.
Shopkeeper owns the building and they live upstairs to that thing, yeah.
Yeah, but I think they have to make...
Well, I, I, I think our, if that's our expectation, we have got a big expectation.
Because it's in many of the blocks.
I don't, I'm not having a problem with the, with someone living up, above a store.
Not an expectation in this sense, in that sense, because it's just an allowance. People can do it.
Or they could rent it. Let's say you, you have a bike store and above you, you've got a, a unit, right? You could rent that, you could live in Southern Pines and, and own the bill, own the building, but rent out that above to somebody else. I just...
It, it says it, I guess my point is, it says it two different ways. On page 12, it says they have to be owned and occupied...
We can adjust.
...by the same person. And on page 53, it says you don't have to. And if you don't have to, then how is it different from mixed-use? I don't know.
We can adjust, we can adjust, we can adjust. We had the same conversation, we didn't make that adjustment in the code.
Ask it because...
No, 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 I...
Okay, let's do that, yeah.
It's a great point, it's a great point. We spent many time talking about live-work in this context, so we'll just take that out to make sure it's clear that you don't have to, because it's gonna be too hard for us to, it's gonna be too...
I would reinforce it.
Okay. Next point, Jane, you got a couple minutes.
On page 22, that, that diagram of the street that we were looking at refers, there's a, a word underneath the trap, the vehicular travel lanes, it says sharrow, S-H-A-R-R-O-W. Never heard that word before.
You're on...
Not in the definitions.
John has.
I think it's a, isn't that a, it's a bike lane.
Yeah, we, we talk about that B-PAC every once in a while.
Share lane.
Share is a sharing, shared lane.
Yeah.
Which is, it's...
It alerts the car driver that bikes...
Required in, in North Carolina anyway.
Yeah.
All of our vehicular lanes are technically sheros, but...
Well, then I think we should have more space so that there's something to share. Well, then I think we should have more space so that there's something to share.
The importance of the share, the importance of the sharrow and having it on the ground is it indicates that that is a potential bike route, and that, and that vehicle, people are driving, they should understand.
Stated on the, on the pavement, the symbol.
Oh, it's on the pavement.
On the pavement, yeah, arrows, like this.
I thought we had some.
Page 35, page 35, in the, in the picture there, it, it says adaptive reuse civic pavilion. What does that mean?
That means it's a reuse of an existing structure that's currently on the site at the, at the public services complex.
That's the original police station, right? Isn't that the old police station?
There'll be several buildings in here, yeah, it could apply to a lot of buildings.
On page 52, they're talking about a hotel with retail.
Yeah.
That, was that's, I don't understand, I've never seen such a thing.
I think it was first-floor retail.
Yeah.
Carolina, in right now, has a coffee shop, you can get, you can get salads to go.
It's a coffee shop with residents as above?
It means it's just, yeah, it's not, it's not that the whole, it's not that the whole, the whole first floor is, is dedicated to the residential use, it's saying they want to have a certain amount of retail on that first floor to be inviting to the public.
Right, flat roofs, there seem to be a preponderance of flat roofs.
There's not.
Yes, it's in all the stuff.
There's not.
I, I put a circle around it every time, and there were circles on all the pages.
We are not promoting flat roofs.
Well, it certainly sounds like you are.
So, Darren, you're saying there are no flat roofs allowed under this, this bill, this code?
There is some, there are, flat roof, flat limitations, flat roof, there, you can't have a flat roof to the street. You can have a flat roof going to the back of the site, like a Long Market Square, all those buildings along Market Square, the vast majority have flat roofs. You can tell that from the front, because it's built up on the front.
You can only have a solar panel on a flat roof, too.
Yeah, I thought you, I thought you.
Can only have a solar plant, panel on a flat roof, too, per the, per the plan.
On page 53, there are warnings about how if you have multifamily over retail or restaurant uses, then you have conflicting environments, and it's gonna be very difficult to have a soothing, restful environment for the, for the residential, while at the same time you have a boisterous environment for the restaurant. And, you know, it, it says so thoughtful planning is needed, well, demands thoughtful design. Well, that, you know, I don't know how that can be part of an ordinance, but.
It can be. It can be, all you gotta do is have a sound, you can have a sound, you can have, you can have a certain design standard in your, potentially in your buildings, to, to beef up the, beef up the insulation, or anything between floors, and they want to do that, they want to do that anyhow, because they don't want to, in new buildings, you don't want to create a bunch of, if, if you have a second-floor unit above a, a first-floor commercial, you don't want to have a bunch of complaints for people not living in that second-floor unit, because, because it's too noisy down below.
Then on page 53, it talks about residential uses in a mixed-use building, having visit, being visitable. In other words, not ADA compliant, so that a wheelchair could be accommodated. And I'm wondering why we're not doing the ADA stuff.
ADA will be required where it's actually required by the building code. So, I think what they're saying, and that might be something that, that's just a recommendation, that it be visible, because we might not be able to mandate, mandate that a, a unit have a certain width bathrooms within, within the unit itself.
Okay.
But that would be something that we could use potentially, if somebody's coming in for a conditional rezoning, and we go, do you have a bunch of visitable units within this, within, within your proposed development? If you don't, this is what the recommendation is.
But should it be boosted to be a recommendation that be fully ADA compliant? I mean, bad idea.
ADA, ADA is required, period, and the visitable would be, would be, would be almost a recommendation.
Lane, yeah. Page 56 and page 62 talk about light, lighting standards, and it says that floodlights are permitted, but should be discreet, and avoid trespass lighting. Is this an opportunity for us to revisit our wonderful Swiss cheese lighting standards in the PDO and write something more better?
We need to do that with this process.
And, and is that verbiage adequate? If we're, if we're doing all these other designs, and designing cornices and fenestrations and, and streets and alleys and, you know, everything else, can we address the lighting in a way that's more better than what we have?
I mean, we could build it into the, into this particular code right now, and then in the future, beef up the rest of the code.
All right, thank you.
I have two, two, two very minor items.
Thank you.
One, early on, there's a couple of places where the word urban, urbanization, urban is in here. Urbanism, on page 1, on C, I don't know if that, I don't find that as a friendly word for our, so I'm, I'm just giving you some advice, it sticks out, I mean, it's, some people get upset when you say suburban around here, but, but urban, that, that's my advice for the moment. And the second thing is.
Tell ourselves what we are.
What?
Don't call ourselves what we are.
Well, I don't, I don't think of us as urban, I mean.
Well, I don't either.
We are urban.
We are urban.
Well, I mean, I know there's some new, there's some new category.
Small urban.
The Census Bureau came up with.
Micro-urban.
Yeah, whatever.
It's, it's a word in the business, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
Pat, go ahead, finish up.
But the other, the other item is, I've got a little, I'm hesitant when they use this phrase of, that Rattlesnake Trail will be a new front door to the village. I think we're overestimating just how big Rattlesnake Trail is, that's a very narrow front door, and we need to think about that. It is a trail, it's not even a road, so I caution us there, and, and they wanna, and the, the planning goal number five, this is also on page two, by the way, a lot of the project goals are very in tune, contrary to urbanism, like you send the vision of Tufts and so on. The number five on planning goals, provide a connected street network that will help to alleviate traffic congestion on a Rattlesnake Trail, and cut through traffic in adjacent, adjacent residential streets. I don't know how, what they're saying is gonna alleviate traffic congestion, so I think we're maybe over-promising there. You can't make something a new front door, and in the same breath, you're gonna alleviate traffic congestion. So, it's more verbiage than.
There's not a lot of opportunity there, there, the only thing you could do is complete that street that comes across to Magnolia, and that's that connected-ism, but where it goes there, where is it gonna go, right?
Right.
Not gonna happen.
Yeah. Okay, anyway, I, I encourage you to take a look at that, because this will, I think this will be well-read by a lot of our residents. It's not that overwhelming, as far as a, a amount of, of lineage and all, and I think they're gonna get into it, more than we think.
All right, so Darren, where do we go from here?
One tiny thing, I'd like to revisit if I could, page 1C, that Pat started with, and I was gonna say something about, and then I forgot about it. I, I, I do not like this quotation, I do not like this quotation at all. I would rather replace it, it, just drop it altogether.
We don't want to explain what a form-based code is, okay.
Have to have it.
We don't have to have it.
The, good, but the alternative would be on page four.
Yeah, four.
1.2, the last paragraph in the first column is less worse than this.
Last paragraph in the first column.
The FBC is specifically prepared.
Specifically prepared to ensure. I think that, that, one of the things that troubles me about this statement on page 1C, is that it takes a very extreme position on form-based code, it says it doesn't have anything to do with separation of uses, and it's only about, you know, the sprinkles on top of the frosting, the architectural gobbledegook. And it, and then, and then it says, just to, just to get your quirk out, this approach contrasts with conventional zonings focus on the micromanagement, please, which is hilarious after the micromanagement that's in here.
We don't do that.
And segregation of land uses, and the control of development intensity through abstract and uncoordinated parameters, e.g., FAR dwellings per acre, setbacks, parking ratios, traffic LOS, to the neglect of integrated built form. All that stuff is in here, so.
I, Jane, I actually agree with, I missed the paragraph you were recommending, I think is a much more friendlier description.
Yeah.
And I, I'm.
If our consultants will adopt that.
It would, we'd have to modify the whole message on this page, which is okay. This is a, a textbook definition of form-based code. What we're doing here isn't really form-based code, it's a, it's a hybrid of Euclidean zoning and form-based code.
So, let's, let's say, here's what we're doing.
Let's go ahead and take a look at it, because I think, again, I think it'll, especially since it's the first page.
Off with the head, yep, it's coming out.
Maybe the, rather say, rather say what is form-based code, maybe say, this is what we're doing.
We can adjust, we can find something else, that's fine.
You can handle that?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Where do we go from here with this document? They're gonna take this back to planning and zoning, are they gonna see this again? What do we, what do, where does it go from here and then move on?
I think we, I, I think the next step is we have to get you into the regulating plan and, and the table of dimension, I think you have to get into some of the minutia on the plan itself, the more important ones, which is the regulating plan document, the table of uses, and the table of special, or the table of dimensional requirements. Those are the three main parts of that document.
Okay.
That you need to spend some more time on, because that is gonna be the code itself. And if we're gonna get any hung, any hang-up going forward with, with the actual written code, I want, we want to know about it before, you know, we come into a, a public hearing.
So, the next step would be to see those other two documents, or three, at the, at our next meeting, following on from where we were tonight. Is that the idea?
Well, sure, we, yeah, depending on what load we have at the next meeting.
This has been very.
I say, good news, Darren. We've got enough to keep you busy for at least another month.
I said I was gonna continue to help on my own time.
I, I'm glad you, you took us through this, Darren, I found this very helpful, and I, I.
I do think we've learned a lot from it, and maybe we're farther along in the approval process.
I'm much more comfortable.
Because of spending time like this on it.
I wish we would.
But we do need to see these other documents, so that we'll.
Would it be helpful, you had to have a list of my questions?
It's always helpful to have a list of your questions.
Okay.
It is.
All right.
If you want to submit that, that's fine. Jeff Sanborn, did you have another idea here? All right, so, we'll try to continue this at our next work session, so that this moves along, but it'll be seeing some new documents, some of which you've shown us a bit tonight, picking up from where we are here. I think we've had good input, I appreciate everybody's attention. It's 8:16, unless I have objection, we're gonna renew, resume at 8:20, and just allow you a chance to sit up and get your other documents, and we're gonna go into the next, next agenda, well, I think we ought to stand up anyway. So, move on to the PDO amendments related to planning community neighborhoods, and I'll put this aside. So, we will resume the work session, we'll be dealing with work session agenda number five, PDO amendments related to creating a planned community neighborhood, neighborhoods. Alex, you're gonna handle this presentation, I believe, and Darren will be with us, too. And I think we're gonna be picking up from where the, you're gonna inform us as to where the planning board left off, and some additional changes or adjustments to some of the language, if I have that, if I have that correct.
Yeah, if you'd bear with us just a minute, Darren has misplaced his documents that he's wanting to share. It's all Darren's fault right now, everything's Darren's fault. But yes, a good summary, John, it's, we're gonna kind of unveil what staff has drafted relative to the planned community neighborhood, and update where the discussions kind of went with our special planning zoning board meeting we had last week.
Right. And what we want to be doing here is hearing any changes, agreeing or discussing, or not agreeing them, and there's another planning board discussion to be held on this at the, at their next meeting, I think, is that correct?
Time, time permitting, we, we hope to, but, yeah, it's opportunity to get council feedback on the, the current draft, and to kind of discuss what we've been hearing, or some key, key topics with the draft.
And that's true, what we need is we have a proposal that we've created, right? So, we've created this proposal, and we need some, we've, we've got some minor feedback, but we've never come to you and talk, and talk in general about, about the proposal, just in general, because if we're gonna move forward with this thing, we, we need to develop the ordinance, we need to, we need to further develop this ordinance. So, if there's some major sticking points within this ordinance, and I don't need to get into, we don't need to get into minor statutory, I want to get into some of the big-ticket items, that there, you know, what do we need to do to make this, to make this ordinance more palatable? Do we need to, do we need to have, you know, when we talked to the planning and zoning board, does there need to be a cutoff date? Does it need to be a grandfathering date? Does there need to be, do we need to upsize what a planned community neighborhood is? Those type of, those type of major elements, we need to get some feedback before we actually, before we actually propose, get the ordinance in ordinance format, hold on one second.
And further, my understanding is that the village attorney has reviewed this information, he's comfortable with the structure of it, is I, I believe, and, and any change, any material you might be bringing to us tonight that's new, he may not have seen just yet, I don't know, but from a structural, statutory point of view, we're on the right track.
The concept, yes.
Yeah, structurally, I mean. Yeah, structurally, I mean, structurally, we, we've sat down with Mike through this entire process, and talked with Mike through the entire process. Jeff, I and Mike spent some time with it, and, and Mike, Mike, I and Alex have spent some time on it as well. So let me get to, of course, I have a PowerPoint presentation ready. You're going to miss this. All right. So, where's that? Where's the? Can you, can you put the, oh. Ah, thank you. All right. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the, the proposed planned community neighborhood. The PDO amendments that would actually create, what, what we're proposing with, with this proposal, 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 is to create a new land use definition, and that's called a neighborhood housing accommodation. So what we would do, if this ordinance moves forward somewhat, somewhat in this fashion, what we're proposing to do is create that new neighborhood housing accommodation that would be seated on table 8.51A. So that would be in the residential area, along with all the other, you know, lodging uses, so it would be in that category. So that's what we're proposing. In order to do that, we've established, so criteria for the neighborhood housing association that would be low, it would have to be located in a planned community neighborhood, as newly defined in section 10.2. We would seat it on table 8.51A. We would establish a new special requirement 10, and that's called neighborhood housing accommodation. And what we're looking for at this point, and we'll go over the, the major definitions and all, everything that we've gone over with, with the planning and zoning board, is we just need some feedback from you, whether the ordinance, or these definitions as currently proposed, if you have any issue, any, any major issues with them, do we need to make any, any real structural changes to them? If not, there's some of the minor comments that, you know, we can do some of the minor edits, but it's the major things. That's what we need to know, whether there's a consensus with the council to keep moving forward with this. So the planned community neighborhood, so these are three, these are the three main definitions of, of, that we're, that we're working with right now. The first one is planned community neighborhood. And that is a contiguous area containing at least 20 acres or 20 dwelling units as included within a planted subdivision or condominium development, for which any person or corporation by virtue of ownership of a lot or a dwelling unit within the PCN is by declaration governed by a master association. So it's really important that, okay, we create the planned community neighborhood, it has its certain size, minimum size requirements, but everything within that, within that planned community neighborhood is really governed by a master association, with powers to enforce and adopt and amend bylaws, rules, regulations, that kind of stuff. So that's really, you have to be within a planned neighborhood, planned community neighborhood to move to step two, which is neighborhood housing accommodation. It's a whole house dwelling occupancy, where a dwelling unit located within the PCN is, and this is the key difference between this and, say, just a basic STR, is managed through a master association, and is leased, offered, or made available by short-term lease or other financial consideration for a time period or lease term of less than 30 consecutive days. And then, lastly, the master association is a nonprofit organization. Again, we're going to, we're going to continue to wordsmith this, because we haven't finalized this yet, but this is the general proposal that we put forward to the, to the planning and zoning board, is a nonprofit organization established pursuant to NCGS 47F 101, 47, yeah, 3101, 47C 3, that should be 101, so this is one of those minor changes that we don't need to get into. By declaration, and I know there's some, some, some discussion points that we might want to get into on that declaration, or its common law equivalent, with powers to enforce and adopt and amend bylaws, rules, and regulations. And then we get into, or by declaration, and responsible to maintain or provide for maintenance of common area and management, here it is, and management of all neighborhood housing accommodations within the PCN. So those are the, these are the three major concepts that move forward. There's a couple others with declaration and executive board, which we may not even need executive board, we might need to work on the declaration, declaration definition, but these are the three main definitions that lead to, one, a seat on the table 8.51A, and two, the, applying the special requirement 10 to neighborhood housing accommodation.
Darren, late last week, you and I talked about the possibility of modifying one of these definitions, maybe the master association definition, to require that the master association be governed by an executive board or board that is elected by the general membership of the property owners in the neighborhood. Is that still, still things appropriate?
That's, that does, yeah.
I had a question, only because I've dealt with this in Pinewild. Is CCNC a planned community pursuant, governed by 40, section 47F? It's, it was created before 1999?
That's where we might have to continue to, to. Or its common law equivalent, and I think we've got some other, we've got some other, and I, and I don't have a language in front of me, that, that may address what you, what you stated.
We, um.
But you're right, 47, because 47, the, the planned community neighborhood applies after 1999, it's all the, it's all the development that, that applies before that, and that's what we were trying to get on with that, you know, with some of those other things like by declaration, and what else, Alex, did we say?
Well, I, the way I understood it, because Pinewild was created before 1999, we're not a planned, oh, we're done, we're not governed by 47F, except 47F dash 1 dash 102C gives all of these separate provisions that do apply, but notwithstanding all of that, Pinewild was not a planned community governed by this.
Right. And, and we, we may need to continue to wordsmith this, to Darren's point.
Yeah, because, yeah, and I don't know.
Recognize that we have a lot of established communities that may, may have predated this statutory legislation, and I think that's the intent of the, or its common law equivalent.
That's it, yeah.
And Mike's aware of this, the potential need to continue to work on that definition as well.
Yeah, there's some, I have some other wording that I've been working on, I just, I just haven't finalized it, so what you're, what you're speaking of is something that we are currently working on.
I, I think that's, that's fair, and I think that places like Pinewild, although they may not have the formal planned community title, are recognized in, in the North Carolina Plan and Community Act as being.
Grandfathered in.
Grandfathered in, as it were, and, and so I think if we, we were to refer to the North Carolina Plan and Community Act and the North Carolina Condominium Act, because we also want to have condominiums, and then say, as well as instruments creating lawful planned communities prior to the effective dates of those acts, you know, something along those lines, when we're talking about what's a declaration, I, I, I think, I think we can probably fold that in. We just have to say specifically what we mean.
Well, Pinewild was not grandfathered in.
But, that's shorthand, but it's recognized as being.
Equivalent.
Yes, it's, it's recognized as being a community which is authorized to self-govern to a certain extent, by virtue of the fact that it has a contract with all of the units, whether they be lots, or whether they be condos. And that contract says that every, every unit owner has a voice on the association, and is going to be governed by a, a major framework document, which is called a declaration in the 1999 act, it might be called by some other title, but, but in other words, and that, that document gets put on the land records, so anybody who wants to buy a unit can see it and has notice of what it says. And the 1999 statute codifies the fact that there is authority to the association to govern all these units, to the extent that's, that's outlined there, by virtue of this written contract that's been put on the land record. So, so I think that this concept that you've put together is, is really a very good one, because what it does is, it distinguishes quite distinctly from the garden variety, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, but the short-term rental, which is a, a one-off in an unincorporated residential neighborhood, to a use that is by contract within one of these self-managed communities. In an ordinary neighborhood, if you buy a house on a street, and you think, well, it's just a row of houses, and I'm buying a house, and all of a sudden, somebody opens up a short-term rental next to you or down the street from you, it's a surprise. It's a surprise you didn't expect it. And in addition, we have some short-term rentals within Pinehurst, that have been here a long time, and are, are managed by folks who are in, on the ground here, and who take pride, and we, we heard quite a bit of that last year, and, and they are well-run. But we also have a number of them that sprung up in the last couple of years, folks who don't live anywhere near Pinehurst, or even in North Carolina, who are not on the ground managing their absentee landlords, and so the management is not, just not the same. So what, what this new use does, it's, it's not a short-term rental, it's a different lodging use, and we have a number of lodging uses. We've got hotels, we've got bed and breakfast, we've got dormitories, we've got roomers and boarders, we've got short-term rentals, and now we've got, we've got this. And it's, it's different, and it takes away that element of surprise. It makes sure that, that these take place within a neighborhood that, by contract, people know ahead of time going in, that this is, this usage is a possibility. And also provides for management. Now, when we were looking at short-term rentals last year, one of the things that we talked about was, how can the village provide for better management of short-term rentals? How can we, how can we prescribe that, as opposed to saying, no, you can't do them at all? And it turned out that we really can't manage them ourselves, as a practical matter. We can address some of the nuisance issues to a certain extent, and we, we did that through our nuisance ordinances, but we are not in the hotel business as a government. And so what this concept does, which I think is, is also very helpful, is it tracks and relies upon the state statute that the General Assembly put in place, that provides authority for self-regulation to these by-contract neighborhoods. And, and I think if we track very, very closely the framework of authority that the general legislature has established through the Plan and Community Act and the Condominium Act, that's going to be a, a very good guide for us in framing this out. And I think, I think we've, we've done well, we've got some language that we may want to zhuzh, or polish, or something, but I, I think that the, the concept is solid. I think it's going to be key to make sure that our planned community provides, in the most basic contract document, which is the declaration, or an amendment to the declaration, that the most basic authority is, is given to the association to allow and manage these lodging uses. And that it is in the declaration, rather, rather than stemming just from the rules and regulations, because the declaration and amendments to the declaration are something that all the unit owners get to vote on, whereas the rules and regulations are promulgated by the association or the executive board. And that, so we don't want, that, there could be, in other words, you could have a planned community that's in existence, that doesn't have any provision, or doesn't address rentals one way or another. And so somebody buying in there wouldn't expect to see this type of use. If this type of use could be started from scratch, just by the executive board promulgating rules and regulations, that really wouldn't be fair, I don't think. It wouldn't be in the spirit of the whole idea that this is a contract amongst willing participants. So I think if we, if we say that the most basic authority to go ahead and have neighborhood housing accommodations within one of these communities comes from the declaration, or an amendment to the declaration, that everybody gets to vote on, then I think we're going to be on very firm ground. And, and then I think it really doesn't matter to the village, the manner in which the community decides to operate its planned community, excuse me, its neighborhood housing accommodation program. Some neighborhoods might, some HOA neighborhoods might say, well, we want the executive committee to actually run it themselves, and others say, well, they can hire somebody to do it for them. Some might say, well, we want all the rentals to go through one particular agent, and others might say, no, you can, whatever agent you want, to rent. I don't think that, at that point, it's, it's really, the village needs to ma, to pay attention to that. As long as it has been adopted contractually by the, by the HOA neighborhood, and the fact that it's limited to the confines of that neighborhood provides a buffer against adverse impact on nearby residential neighborhoods. I think at that point, we're, we're pretty good, so.
Thank you for, you filled in some blanks for me, and I appreciate that. I do have a, a question of Darren and Alex. You focused on the, or its common law equivalent, and you said there might be some other language you're going to tinker with. Are the tinkering with language, is it only related to these three paragraphs, or is it elsewhere in your, in the document?
Well, I know this one, we'll have some, we'll have some tinkering.
Master Association.
On this one.
Maybe the definition of declaration as well.
Declare, yes, declaration as well. We might need to, we might need to tighten this up, because this, I, I think I pulled this from the, the Plan and Community Act, and this was their definition.
I see.
In any terms, however, I think this, I think this causes some concern, that create a planned community neighborhood. So I was trying to find if there was a statutory reference or cross-reference there, I haven't been able to find that yet. And I'm not, I'm not even sure if we need the executive board anymore.
Okay.
So it'd really be.
Really down there.
This one, this one, I, what we wanted to make sure is, I think we wanted to, we wanted to differentiate this between the STR, so we might have to do some language, just to make it clear that this is not an STR.
With regard to that differentiation, Jane, you made some very good points there. I think there's another really key differentiation that may be more important, or at least as important as the ones that you called attention to, and that is the fact that the program, the rental program, is necessarily run by a master association that is answerable to the membership.
Right.
Yeah, I still.
And that, that's where I think we, going back to.
Yes.
The suggestion that we have, we tie in the fact that the master association is governed by a board that's elected by the, the general membership.
And I still, I still would like an answer to my question, and maybe not tonight, wait, let me ask a question.
That is spelled out in, in the statute.
Yeah.
It is spelled out in the statute. We, doesn't mean we can't add it in, but, yeah.
What if? What if CCNC is not a nonprofit organization that is governed by Section 47F? I would like an answer to that question. I don't think we, it's not covered by 47F.
Use your microphone, please.
CCNC is not a nonprofit organization that is covered by Section 47F.
It's a nonprofit organization.
It's not covered by 47F, and it seems to me that a lot of the underpinnings of what we're doing is sourced in Section 47F.
Right, but Section 47F does not wipe out planned communities that were established prior.
No, it doesn't. They're governed by something else in the statute. My wall is not governed by this, it's governed by 55. I think there are two other sections and two other chapters in the general statutes that govern organizations formed before 1999. And it's just, again, it's just, this seems to be, have a fundamental underpinning of section of Chapter 47F.
Well, that's not a fatal flaw.
I don't know. I don't know.
To earlier ones, then we can do it. But this, Chapter 47F does, and I am not an expert on this stuff in North Carolina by any stretch of the imagination, but it, this statute, the 47F statute, does make reference to sections, the sections, a vast number of sections within it that do apply to earlier formed planned communities. And if we need to make a reference to an earlier statute for the authority, then there we go.
That may be a good suggestion that Lydia is making. Maybe council, village attorney might want to just take a look at this 55.
The way to make it more inclusive, I think. Better language to make it more inclusive.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, it says, a nonprofit organization established pursuant to, in North Carolina general statutes, 47F. Well, actually, it's established pursuant to just a Chapter 47F, or its common law equivalent. I have no idea of what its common law equivalent means.
I think, or its common law equivalent, isn't as good as it could be. I think, you know, I was thinking something along the lines of, you know, a lawfully create, a lawful planned community that was created prior to the effective date, but if there's other statutes that do govern those, maybe we could write those in.
I have, I'm working on language. I didn't include it here, but there is some language in the works that I believe addresses most of what we're talking about right now.
Okay. That's not the end of the world.
All right. I don't recall this.
We have a point to work on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
And I would also just mention, master association, that term, is defined in Chapter 47F, but it's not defined to have the job that you're describing in the ordinance. And so I'm, you know, a master association is defined in Chapter 47F as being, if you've got a whole bunch of different HOAs located like polka dots around, and one umbrella association that's working to manage all of them, that's a master association. That's not what we're talking about here, like a franchise or something. We're not talking about that. So I think using, just using the term master association can be a little confusing. I think what, we can just say association.
But in the case of some of the larger ones, they're, say, CCNC, there are several associations within CCNC. So there are several different ones that were created.
Maybe the right answer is to somehow craft it so that it's master association or association, whichever is appropriate.
Or association which shall include master association, or something like that. Something like that, yeah.
Thank you, Darren.
Anything else on this?
I think we're fine.
On these?
For now.
Go ahead. You had other points you wanted to get into.
Yeah, we need to get to the table of uses and then the SR9.
Okay.
10.
10.
So we'll go to SR10. So we're proposing like we did for short-term rentals, we created SR9. Now we're proposing to create SR10, neighborhood housing accommodation. Really, the major difference between this and STRs is so if you see A compliance with SR9 to SR standards, 1A through K, those are all those development standards that are in STRs, like the capacity, all that kind of stuff. And these new ones, B through E, are really the new ones that have been added on. Submission of documentation and content information that the neighborhood housing accommodation is located within a planned community neighborhood. Submission of documentation of master association rules and regulations pertaining to operation of NHAs. Again, this is documentation that we once submitted because we're going to, also, we're going to require a development permit for the neighborhood housing accommodation. Submission of documentation that the neighborhood housing accommodation has been authorized by the master association, and maybe we need to mess with that a little bit if it's being managed by the association or by the master association should be coming from. So maybe we need to wordsmith that a little bit. And the one that really had the most amount of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Board was installation of a landscape screen per PDO along the property line adjacent to the residential use, not part of the planned community neighborhood. So what we put that in here for was, if you're, you know, some of the concerns that have been raised, we thought that, all right, so if you're going to have a neighborhood housing accommodation inside your neighborhood, it's fine because you've bought into that. But if you're adjacent to that neighborhood, what we're proposing is simply put some type of landscaping to, as an additional, as additional type of buffer.
As adjoining neighbors haven't bought into it.
To adjoining neighbors, yes.
Yeah, I think that's good. I went back and looked at the landscape buffer statutory sections, and we've got, well, 9.5.1.3, I don't think is actually the one that we really want to be citing. It's tree surveys and stuff.
No, 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 no. That 9.5.1.3 is the, it's the higher level of screening, all right, Alex? That's actually the opaque screening requirement.
I think that changed to part two whenever we did.
Oh, I'm using an old code. Never mind.
So 9.5. Darren, so 9.5.1.4 is the residential buffer yard standards that we adopted in 2021, I think.
We don't want to use that.
That's not what we want.
It should be 9.5.2.3.
9.5.2.3 are non-residential and multifamily buffers, but then there's 9.5.2.4, and those are landscape screens.
To the 75% who pass.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the one in my old code. That's the one, that's whatever. My old code is so well.
You'll be changing it to that.
Yes. I mean, that's the proposal. Now, I think there was some concern at the planning and zoning level, could they actually, could they actually install that? I think that, because you can do it through a fence as well. So it's just a heavier level of screening. I think it's reasonable. If it's not reasonable, we'll find out rather early, and they can come get a variance, and then we can look at it and see what we need to do to adjust the code. I'd rather be a little bit more conservative going into it and say, let us try it and see if it works.
It's feasible so long as the setback is large enough.
It should be.
And if it's not, if the setback is not large enough, then you could get a variance.
Theoretically, it should be.
That's right. It's a gated community. It's going to have pretty good setbacks.
What if a neighborhood doesn't like landscape screens? I mean, you're talking about a screen along the property line. What if a neighborhood doesn't like landscape screens?
Which neighborhood?
My wall.
Well, we're talking about the separation between that neighborhood and an adjoining neighborhood.
Adjoining neighborhood. Yes, yes. Not within.
The perimeter.
The perimeter. That's not with the.
Of the HOA.
That's correct.
I think this is a very good, very good concept.
And now you'll go back to the Planning and Zoning Board, or you're going to do some tinkering, or what's the next sequence of events here?
Let us talk a little bit about, we're going to talk internally and figure out what to do. We have to do some tinkering.
And I think Mike, Mike Newman will want to review any of the thoughts we've had here tonight.
We work closely with Mike on all this.
Billy, what we'd like to shoot for, though, is the development of an actual ordinance that could go before the Planning and Zoning Board and their public hearing requirement.
Yes, right. That's the idea.
Right, they need a public hearing.
And tonight was that feedback that we needed, we needed to hear that this was a doable concept in your minds so we could finish it up. The other part of that is Table 8.51A, is where it would be seated as a neighborhood housing accommodation. And I think our idea, disregard this, I think our idea is that it would be applicable in all the residential and all, anything that has an R on it, which is residential or residential multiple family districts, and I think the VR district, another residential districts. To start out, I think that would be our, that would be our recommendation, is that where the neighborhood housing accommodation could potentially locate.
It would be applicable in almost all zoning districts.
In all the residential zones, yeah. If, remember, if it's in a planned community neighborhood.
Right.
So it meets all those requirements. So they're.
So it would be applying the mixed use? No.
No, we didn't. Well, mixed use already, mixed use allows, the VMU already allows short-term rentals.
That's right.
Yes, it does.
I think this is doable, and I support it.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Any other points from council? Any other points from Alex or Darren? Very good work. Thank you very much. We're moving along. Without objection, we'll go to the next agenda item, number six, which is a traffic circle discussion. Jeff Samborn, I think you're going to take care of this.
I can try.
Wait, Darren, why don't you review the traffic circle?
The night is young.
Rezone the traffic circle. We need Darren's.
There you go.
Okay, so Kelly's.
Making a neighborhood traffic accommodation.
Right. I want to thank Kelly for organizing a response, our responses here in a report that's going to come up on the screen in a minute, I think.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
We've had a few other, there's been a few other by email suggestions from members of the public of things they'd like to have considered, if not already on these points that we've made.
Anyway, I guess while we're wrestling with the technology over there, we got a lot of feedback from you all about things that you'd like to potentially pursue as we develop this question of the traffic, future traffic circle, or whatever to do about the traffic circle in the future. And Kelly has organized those various inputs for you. There's another piece of this that you need to be aware of. I had a conversation with Patrick Norman today, actually, it's the second one I've had since your last council meeting and work session. And he is very interested in collaborating with us on a way forward, which would include some or all of this. He's already got a copy of this as well, but he would like to wait until after their NCDOT board meeting, the state meeting is being held here in Pinehurst, the first, well, the end of the first week in February. And he would like to wait until after that to start that engagement. So I think the framework would be a couple of council members and myself, or myself and Jeff Patton, or whoever I think is appropriate, would go up there to DOT and start this dialogue with them about what to do about these types of things. So without getting bogged down in all these details about what things you recommended and whether or not we want to pursue, maybe that's just the best approach at this point is to say, we have a start point with DOT, and we have the opportunity to sit down and talk about each of these with them, and we can have that engagement and bring it back to you.
What's that date, Jeff? I missed your date.
Well, we don't have the meeting, this meeting scheduled yet.
The one he's going to.
Yeah, that board meeting is the 7th and 8th of February, I think.
I think it may start as early as the 6th, but certainly the 7th.
Okay, so their future, their future.
Oh, yeah, it's coming right up, within a couple of weeks, two and a half weeks.
Park Service will be here the 5th and 6th, and so whatever role they're supposed to play, they will be here.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you, Lydia, but I think, this is a meeting of the state board. They have it around the state. It happens to be in Pinehurst this year, which is fine. Good luck for us.
My comment is the Park Service, and they will be here the 5th and 6th.
They're here at the same time.
Well, yeah, I mean, Ellen Rankin expressed a desire to have a meeting with Division 8 about the Morganton Road realignment and the traffic circle project. Patrick has indicated to them that because of this statewide conference, he's just not available to do that meeting while they're here, so.
Well, she's going to be here, and she seems to be in the loop now, which is probably all we can ask for.
Oh, yes, they are. And I think, and I think we will have discussions directly with those representatives from the NPS about these issues among all the other, yeah.
Okay, so when they're here, you'll meet with them.
Correct, yeah. There'll be, it'll be a busy early week for these sort of meetings directed at the traffic circle.
All right.
Now, there are a couple of, we've all received some emails in the last couple of days from additional folks, some proposing new additional ideas or changes or whatnot, others talking about the need to make a change. And I think this list is, I think, reasonably concise. I think there's a couple of duplications on it. We could pare that down and maybe add in some suggestions from others, just so we have note of that and elaborate on those. But this is the sort of document I think we would want to get in the hands of DOT.
They have it.
Yeah. Well, they have this now, but anything we add to it tonight would be a version number two, whatever we'd call that. Now, the question comes up in emails that we've received to the effect that it looks like the council wants to do a, either no change, or we don't like all the options that have been presented to us. And some emails understand the point that we are looking at less, we are looking at alternatives that are less invasive, and I'm trying to get that message across because I think that's important for folks to understand. But there, but we do need to keep communicating with the DOT on this and with the public as we get information. I don't know if there are other suggestions that people want to add to this list tonight or make any other changes to it, but this will be the time to do that, if you wish to add to this or change it.
I guess I'd make a general suggestion, and maybe Jeff Samborn may have some thoughts here in particular, and that is, this is already in Patrick Norman's hands. I'm wondering if it's wise.
Didn't provide it to him. Somebody that downloaded it off our website, for this meeting, provided him with a copy of it.
Fine, that's fine. I don't have any problem with that.
But maybe we, maybe your point is we should communicate that directly.
Yeah, no, I think it would be, might be wise that there be a transmittal letter officially to Patrick Norman rather than he's walking around with sort of a bootleg copy. And the mayor could say something, you know, of the effect that we, as a council, have reviewed the variety of options and so forth, and we wanted to share with you, NCDOT, some of our, and I wrote down your word there, John, less invasive options that maybe we can undertake before getting to something big. And so we're on record, and he's heard directly from us as a council or from the mayor. Anyway, that's just my thoughts rather than this. It's gotten too, a little loosey or gooseier than I'd like it because when we were, when he was here before us and we were talking to him, it was much more crisper as to what was going to, what's our next step? Here's what we're proposing. And sort of in the, I don't know, the last several months.
We could certainly do that. I don't think we'd want to call this as our less invasive options, though, because there's a whole series of things here that aren't about necessarily less invasive options, the data collection, for example.
Yeah.
Nowadays, where we're going forward and.
That's why I was asking you, yeah. It's got to be more than that, but that, we are including some of those, but there are the data issues and then the collaboration, as Lydia has referred several times to about the National Park Service. And, okay.
If we could maybe do that this way. If we could maybe do that this week, Jeff, and and one other concept in there would be, and we look forward to seeing you after the during and after the NC Board of Transportation meeting here in Pinehurst.
Process, right.
Yeah, it's part of the process.
I think it would be good if Norman had this with him for his big meeting, just in case someone says, well, what have they said? Okay, what are they communicating to you? And he can say, well, we've gotten some movement and here's where we're what we're talking about rather than, you know, I got a piece of paper.
We can work on that over the next day, Jeff, and we can sign that letter together and get that off to Pat. Is that agreeable to the council? That seem to be a good follow up on that? Jeff Morgan?
I think that the collaboration is totally appropriate. I want to make sure that we're communicating. I think that maybe we fell short on that previously. I got a couple of questions, though, because my understanding when when DOT was down here before, they gave the presentation, we had three options. One was a, you know, basically grip out the entire circle and then put in the basically the four way on there, the continuous motion on there, our continuous movement. The second thing on there was a flyover bridge, to call it whatever you like. And the third thing was if we delayed it, that we're missing the 2029 open window. Is that still true?
Yes, with a caveat. So the other thing that Patrick revalidated with me in our conversation earlier today was that he is following through with the request to DOT to push this project out to pass the 2029 open. And however, in light of that, he's very much interested in trying to look at, for example, some of these suggestions, less impactful things that we can do in the meantime, recognizing that none of them are going to be a long term solution.
Who has the decision making authority on this as to what goes down for the traffic circle?
DOT.
Okay, so so we are putting in recommendations as to what we want.
Right.
And they're the ones who then decide depending on what they think is appropriate or not.
It is their asset.
Okay. All right. Well, I think that even enhances or strengthens the argument to make sure we are collaborating well with them.
Yeah.
And coming up with a plan because that was my suspicion, that they are the decision makers. And as we continue to kick the can down the road on this, we run the risk of them making a decision without our input. So I want to make sure that we are collaborating with them and having our input and being good partners in all this. So do appreciate the collaboration. Thank you.
I think good points, Jeff, and I think although it may not have always seemed so, I think that at least in the last few years, having a collaborative relationship with our region, Division Eight, Division Eight, has been an objective of the last of all of us on the council, and we have some disagreements perhaps here in the traffic circle, but obviously we are looking to coordinate with them and they with us. I'm very encouraged by the conversations that Jeff Sanborn has had.
If I might, I might take an opportunity to elaborate on, I think, on what Jeff was saying there. So there's two kind of ways that DOT will look at things like this. The first is, well, okay, if you don't want to want us to spend our money here, there are plenty of other requirements around the state. And the second is, but this traffic circle belongs to us and we need to serve the needs of the region. And if if need be, we will make a determination about what's going to happen there. And Patrick also reinforced that notion with me in my conversation today.
In your comment, now you used the word we a couple of times, and in that context, it was DOT, we being DOT.
That's right.
Thank you.
And my perception on this, and maybe it's skewed, but in talking about this, having lived here for eleven years, we've been engaged in this for certainly the time that I've been here. And I think we're the ones where the council, Pinehurst, sought out their input and asked for their some of their suggestions. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. But subsequent to that, we've never really come up with a plan that the council agreed to, to propose to them. And and I think we need to make sure that we are coming up with a decision. Part of this plan is we're setting it up for decisions, what's going to happen, to have input on this.
Yeah, I want to give them some things to react to that we think have some possibility, but we need to discuss that with them. All right.
Sorry, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else on the traffic circle discussion? And I think we have a good way forward. Jeff will work on that. We'll do that this week.
Yeah, I let me just take this one other one more opportunity to clarify, though. The idea of less invasive invasive, in my conversation with Patrick, here is my impression of his his take on things like that. They're willing to collaborate with us on less invasive things to bridge the gap because this thing is being pushed out, but those less invasive things will not be the final solution.
Understood.
I expect that would be. Wouldn't it be fair to say they may not be the final solution unless one or another of them turn out to work?
Well, this is where.
As we hope.
You know, we have us laypeople here talking about what might work, and then you have the engineers talking about.
Yeah, of course.
My money's on the engineers.
I'm. I'll find a couple.
Kevin, I just want to make one clarifying point. The difference is the engineers do not have to answer to the residents of Pinehurst. There are five of us sitting around this table, and our predecessors, as we look back.
You're completely you're completely right, Patrick. Let me say this.
That do.
We have to answer to our residents. They don't. It's their asset, and they will make their decision with or without our input.
That's true. That's always been true.
So it might be wise for us to choose the less invasive option.
Oh.
You know, let me let me throw in here because I've been talking about collaboration and the global approach, comprehensive approach, whatever, and so I have a copy of the comprehensive Moore County, excuse me, comprehensive transportation plan. This is like drinking water out of a fire hose. There is so much stuff in here. I'm going to be out of town next week, so I'm lending it to Patrick in case he wants to read it. I just, like you said, we can buy some time, and it may not change anything, but we may be able to buy some time and look at the bigger picture. Like, you know, I take it back, the Western Connector is a big deal, and it's a big deal in here. And not that I want to go there, but I just think there are bigger pieces to this puzzle that are worth looking at, and they're contained in this very comprehensive document.
West, I agree. The Western Connector is a very powerful piece of the overall puzzle.
Mm hmm.
It is also an immensely expensive project, and therefore it's going to require more justification to pull it off.
Really? Okay. Well, it's worth.
It's more expensive than the circle?
It's going to be later.
But it's interesting, there's an entire section in here about the Western Connector and the whole, oh, there's a whole section in there about the timeline of everything that's happened since like 2000 and what? This is this is an amazing document.
It's June 2020.
First time you've seen it? Yeah. I never heard of it until last week.
We've had this in the Moore County plan.
I never, when Lydia showed it to me, I said, sure, I'd like to take a look at it. I mean, she's annotated it. It's very helpful.
Sixteen.
Jane's pretty familiar with it. I know that.
Okay.
Okay, well, this is good. There's a good update, and we have some forward looking plans here. Let's move on to item number seven, which is any other work session business for tonight or any suggestions for future agenda items.
Before I forget, can I circle back to Patrick's question about the public safety reports?
Yes.
Because as I reflected on that question, I recall something. I think I can answer it pretty well.
Oh, go ahead.
And it's it's very, very much associated with the comment that Jane made about us pulling back from the governor's highway safety task force program, whatever. It's related to that. A couple of years ago, when Glenn was hired as the police chief, he took note of the fact that there was a noticeable dissatisfaction rate among our residents with patrolling in their neighborhood. And so he made a deliberate move to pull or reallocate priorities, if you will, off of our highways in that go through Pinehurst and pull those patrols inside the neighborhoods where they'd be more visible to our residents. As a result, they've been writing a lot less, a lot fewer tickets.
Makes sense.
Now, do you want to raise or postpone again your, this is a suggestion, so go ahead and make it.
This this topic, this minor, I call it minor, topic regarding the five year long term capital needs, things we have included and things that are further out, we don't, I'm not asking for a decision tonight, I just want to sort of repeat my premise as I looked at that list that Mark Matt prepared. It seemed to me that what's not included in the front five year long term needs are the public services relocation construction, which is directly linked to our Village Place build out, and the more the purchasing of the water tanks from Moore County. And there were two items that I saw that were included in the earlier part that I think should be pushed out and replaced by those two. One was the parking facility construction. I just don't see that happening really quick. And the other was the West Pinehurst Park initial development. It hasn't been developed in a long time. We can, it's probably one of the easier things to grab and bring back if we want to. But anyway, that's my feeling. I think we need to pay attention a little bit to the sequencing of these things.
Well, I guess. What is on the table right now is the result of your strategic planning retreat. This is the guidance that you gave us. If you want to change it, then let's have the conversation. Barring that, I thought what we came away from the last discussion about this with was that we as a staff, as we as we developed our five year plan going forward based on your current guidance, would look for opportunities to potentially move those things forward, and if we can, we will.
Well, I'd like to.
I would, I would.
I hear the staff thinking of why not to move not not to move them the way I'm suggesting. There may be arguments I haven't thought of.
So you shouldn't make that decision in this format.
Okay.
If if you all want us to, we can bring that back to you in a work session, and so you can see it in the context of everything else and have a conversation.
That's fine with me.
Is that what you would like?
Well, Jeff, wouldn't this also be coming out in the FY25 budget with the five year?
That was the point I was trying to make is, you know, we got that guidance to look for opportunities to move those things forward.
Right.
And through our budgeting, budget building, budget and SOP building process, we would do that, try to find an opportunity to move it forward.
Right. So that's the that's the process you're going under right now, in fact, as you start to do the next budget. We would hear we would hear about that in the next few months, correct? I'm missing something.
Well, I mean, you'll hear about it, I mean, in that in that framework, you would hear about it like at the end of April.
And Jeff, by then, you've already put the pieces in place based on the input you've already gotten from us, and it sounds like you're saying you want to provide different input.
Well, in fairness, and Jeff is absolutely correct, what we have in there now is something we had decided at the retreat, one of those days, and I admit, I missed the sequencing of it. This is why when I first, when I saw it, I said, that should be another way. So I'm prepared, if we want to discuss it in a work session next time, we can play it out. I'd like to hear from staff and saying, hey, don't change that, or here's the reasons not to. I just.
Do that.
I'm okay with that. I don't have to, I don't need a decision tonight. I'm not looking to make anybody decide tonight.
Sure, we all understand what we're talking about because it is possible for one's mind to wander. Not very often it can happen.
You just want to revisit the five year plan, right?
We're going to bring this to the next work session then.
Yeah.
Well, two items can change everything.
I think you thought it'd be all right to bring this to the next work session then?
I think we, Matt's not here, but I think we can do that. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
That's right. I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other topics for the work session?
No.
Future work session topics. All right, hearing none. We have a motion to close the work session, move into a closed meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move to recess the work session and enter a closed session pursuant to NCGS section 143 dash three eighteen point 11A five to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
That's a motion by Jane Hogman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Pat Pizzella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move into closed session momentarily.